Good morning, everyone. I want to welcome you to the Finance and Housing Committee meeting. Today is May 18th, 2021. I'm Teresa Mosqueta, Chair of the Committee. Will the Clerk please call the roll?
Teresa Mosqueta.
Present.
Vice Chair Herbold. Council President Gonzalez.
Here.
Councilmember Lewis.
Present.
Councilmember Strauss.
Present.
Councilmember Morales. Madam Chair, that is five present.
Thank you very much, colleagues. And I want to extend a welcome to our Council President, Council President Gonzalez, and our deepest condolences again for the loss that your family is experiencing of their mother-in-law and the tragic incidents in your condo. We all have been thinking about you and appreciate you being here today and look forward to the long conversation that we have in front of us. Colleagues, we do have a full agenda. We have 45 people currently signed up for public comment. So I want to warn folks that there is going to be a one-minute limit on public comment. We also will have consecutive translation during public comment, and then we'll have simultaneous translation during the remainder of the presentations that we're going to have translation for. We will do first, a Domestic Worker Standards Board report out, and then a briefing on the American Rescue Plan Act proposal, including the federal guidance that we received last Monday. And then we'll have a briefing on the Independent Contractor Protections Ordinance. Thanks again to Vice Chair Herbold for her leadership on that. Please note that today, we will have the opportunity for folks who have a need for consecutive translation to have double the amount of time. So one minute for everyone, except for those who are requiring translation. We'll have two minutes for those individuals to make sure that we can accommodate translation. After the public comment period, everyone in present in the Zoom will need to select the interpretation tool, which is in the control panel at the bottom of your screen. And I'll read these instructions in Spanish as well when we get there. Everyone in the Zoom is going to need to select a language that they'd like to listen to, and the two choices today are English and Spanish. You must choose one of those to listen in, otherwise you will not hear anything on your end. The attendees who are listening in after public comment will be able to select those languages as well for our guests who are here today. And we do have a large list of folks who are here to present on the agenda today. With that, if there's no objection, today's agenda will be adopted. Hearing no objection, today's agenda is adopted. Again, colleagues, we have about 45 people signed up for public comment. I'm going to moderate the public comment in the following manner. I'll call three speakers at a time in the order in which they're registered. If you are still interested in providing public comment, you can go to seattle.gov/council to provide public comment. And once I call your name, you will hear you have been unmuted, but you need to also push star six. You need to also hit star six so that you can become unmuted. Begin speaking by saying your name and the issue that you're here to address. You're going to hear a 10-second time at the end of your allotted time, and that's your indication to wrap up. If you would like to continue listening in, please go to seattlechannel.gov or the other listen-in options on your agenda. Oh, thank you. Thank you very much for the translation services here. I'm going to do my best to read this in Spanish, which is probably much better than my off-the-top-of-my-head translation. Thanks again to our team, Farida Cuevas, for making this possible. Okay, here we go, folks. Thank you for dealing with my attempt at reading in Spanish. I'm sorry that that was very much incorrect in some places. That is on me. The first three people are Selena Carcitos, Darcy Harrison, and Samantha Kerschel. Good morning, Selena.
Hello, my name is Selena Carcito, and I will be speaking about the ARPA... Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
My name is Selena Carcito, and I will be speaking about the ARPA Direct Aid. I live in District Five, and I am a homeowner at Bitter Lake Village Condominiums, a complex of 92 homes on Linden Avenue North that abuts the north boundary of Bitter Lake Park. We see on a daily basis how COVID has impacted households in North Seattle and request the city direct aid to address the negative economic impact of COVID in our community, which is HUD Census Track 4.01. I stand with other neighbors in my community and the group Save Bitter Lake to support the idea of the city of Seattle directing ARPA funds to lease the Sam's Club at 135th and Aurora Avenue North, which has been vacant since 2018. This property has the capacity to serve the large number of people who are experiencing homelessness in the North End, both short and long term. Sam's Club would follow a similar model as the Tesla dealership in Soto, which is leased from the private owner. People staying at City Hall and Seattle Center were relocated to Tesla in Soto, and people camping in tents in public spaces of North Seattle would be relocated to Sam's Club on Aurora. In the short term, over 60 tents at the Bitter Lake Park and Broadview Thompson Elementary, as well as tents set up in the nooks and crannies of the North End could be relocated to the parking area. In the long term, the building could become an enhanced shelter.
Thank you so much. Appreciate you flagging that. The next person is Darcy. Good morning, Darcy. And, Darcy, if you can...
Thank you, Chair.
Yes, I can hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Wonderful, yes.
Thank you. Hello, and thank you, Chair and Seattle City Council members. I am public commenting on opposition to CB 120069, excuse me. Darcy Harrison, I'm the owner of Emerson Salon in Capital Hill, and I own a home in District Three. I've been a business owner in Seattle since 2012. Emerson Salon is a booth rental salon where all service providers went to share with a rental term contract. That pay my LLC chair rent each week, hold all required licenses, insurance, pay their own taxes, and determine their own scheduling policies and supplies. I am also one of the leaders of the historic grassroots effort to battle state legislation in Olympia in 2019, aimed at eliminating booth rental for cosmetologists, as well as to redefine independent contracting in Washington State. We have effectively nailed all of these broad bill attempts through our outreach efforts with Cosmetologists of Washington United Trade Association. We have over 11,000 supporters and over 250 enrolled advocates toward predominantly booth renters or booth rental salon owners.
Thank you.
This proposed ordinance will... Excuse me?
Oh, thank you. Sorry, Darcy, we got to the end of our time here this morning, but I definitely appreciate you calling in. And if you could send in the rest of your comments, that would be great. We're going to go next to Samantha. Good morning, Samantha. And Samantha, if you can hit star six to unmute yourself.
Hi. Good morning, Chair Mosqueta, and members of the committee. My name is Samantha Kerschel, and I am the Executive Director for TechNet in Washington in the Northwest. Respectfully, I am testifying in opposition to the current version of Council Bill 120069 today. I sent this committee a letter from our association, as well as proposed amendment language drafted by some of our member companies. So I'll just keep my comments brief. We support disclosure and agree that workers should have access to the information they need to make informed choices about whether to accept or deny work, including the assignment, the location, and how much they will be paid. Unfortunately, as currently drafted, this bill requires extensive and duplicative disclosures to independent contractors, and this results in cumbersome processes where paragraphs of content are being displayed over and over again as drivers attempt to work on the platforms. So we believe there are ways to concisely disclose critical information without the risk of it getting lost in paragraphs of text. Thank you for your consideration of our concerns and of our amendment language.
Thank you very much, Samantha, and perfect timing. Apologies for the shorter time today, folks. Really want to get through everybody here, and that was great modeling. The next three people are Mia Kelly, Chris Wilfong, and Joe Thompson. Good morning, Mia. Star six to unmute yourself.
Good morning, council members. My name is Mia Kelly. I'm a former gig worker and now an organizer with Worker Washington's Pay Up Campaign. People do gig work because it's the only source of income that works for them and their lives. Gig workers aren't covered by minimum wage or any other basic protection, and thousands are taking home only a few dollars an hour after expenses, even though companies advertise that you can make up to $25 an hour. Every day, we hear from workers who depend on that flexibility of gig work. We see apps ship away at that flexibility by penalizing them for rejecting low-paying offers. I hear from workers who have been deactivated for no reasons and get no response when they contact support. I also hear from workers who have also become homeless because of their car breaking down, and they haven't been able to put away money for savings while working up to 60 hours a week. That's why we're happy to hear that the council is including a commitment in the Contractor Transparency Ordinance to create a pay standard, flexibility protections, and more robust transparency policies for gig workers this year. We are here today to ask you to move this legislation forward as first steps toward ending of subminimum wages for gig workers who predominate people of color, immigrants, single parents, LGBT workers, and workers with disabilities. I also want to underscore the importance of another issue before the committee today: portable benefits for domestic workers.
Thank you.
Like us, domestic workers...
Thank you very much. Please do send in the rest of your comments. The next person is Chris. Good morning, Chris. Hi, Chris.
Good morning. My name is Chris Wilfong. I'm a gig worker for Uber Eats and Rover. And I'm here to show support for the transparency bill, and I also want to talk about creating protections for pay and flexibility for gig workers. So most gig workers choose to be gig workers because they have other responsibilities in their lives that require it. For me, I have family responsibilities, and basically, we can't have true flexibility if we're being paid so little that we have to work an insane number of hours to live comfortably. So I need to be able to take time off of work to visit my mother and be in my nephew's lives, and that's all I really have to say.
Thank you very much for calling in today. The next person is Joe. Good morning, Joe.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Hi. Thank you, council members. My name is Joe Thompson, and I am the President of Mercy Housing Northwest. I'm asking you to please consider a $2.5 million allocation of the Recovery Act funds to support resident services for the city's non-permanent supportive housing, affordable housing communities. I feel funding at this level and not less is critical to ensure that our services are robust enough to meet the challenges brought on by COVID-19 that our residents face and will continue to face for the foreseeable future. Mercy Housing Northwest has a longstanding commitment to providing onsite services at all of our properties and to all of our residents. To this point, we've received no funding from the city of Seattle. We'd very much like to expand the depth of our services, and this funding would allow us to do that. So thank you very much for considering allocating ARPA funds to support resident services at non-permanent supportive housing communities.
Excellent. Thank you very much. The next three speakers are Dr. Alexandra Gervis, Justin Simmons, and Eldica Dominguez. Good morning, Dr. Gervis.
Good morning, council members. My name is Dr. Alexandra Gervis, and I'm here speaking in support of a portable benefits mandate for domestic workers. I wrote my doctoral thesis on portable benefits, and after spending the last three years studying it, I've found that there's significant policy interest at the federal, state, and municipal level, but Philadelphia is the only city to successfully pass a mandate. Seattle could lead the way in demonstrating that a mandate is possible and could serve as inspiration along with San Francisco in driving policy across the country. I also believe the power of a portable benefits mandate goes beyond the benefits themselves. Benefits in this case become legibility tools. They make domestic work visible and quantifiable. Providing a benefit structure helps to legitimize domestic work as standard work that is deserving of protections. And finally, in my research, I have found that access to benefits without a mandate and a way to accrue hours equitably will not result in domestic workers getting protection. That's why the recommendation of the DWSB is crucial. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. And the next person is Justin. Good morning, Justin.
My name is Justin Simmons, lifelong District Five resident. I live in a 92-unit lakefront condominium community at Bitter Lake. I am also allied with the groups Save Bitter Lake and Broadview Thompson K8. In my email yesterday, I received a message from former Seattle City Council member Bruce Harrell, now a leading candidate for mayor. Harrell wrote, "I believe the majority of these ARPA funds need to address the homelessness crisis, especially helping people who are camped on school property, near playfields, and in other sensitive areas. We know that the whole encampment situation at Bitter Lake is an escalating problem, not just for neighbors, teachers, parents, children, and campers, but for you as council members who are responsible, along with the Seattle School Board, for the land occupied by this encampment. The city has an opportunity to respond now in a way that would protect the interests of each of these groups. We are asking you to use some of the ARPA funds to relocate this unpermitted encampment from Bitter Lake to another location where services and facilities would be more readily available, environmental impacts would be mitigated, and resistance from neighbors would be much diminished. We'll be sharing our suggestions with you. Thank you."
Thank you for your time today. The next person is Eldica Dominguez. Buenos dias, Eldica. Puedes empezar, y vas a tener dos minutos si necesitas traducción.
Buenos dias. Mi nombre es Eldica Dominguez, y soy miembro líder del colectivo de niñeras. He sido niñera por más de diez años en esta ciudad, y he tenido la oportunidad de apoyar a nuestra industria desde que se creó la ley de las trabajadoras del hogar. Estoy muy emocionada de que muy pronto voy a formar parte de la mesa de estándares laborales. Le pido a este consejo que apoya las recomendaciones que la mesa de los estándares laborales presentará hoy. En Ciaro, muchos trabajadores, empleadores, no conocen la ley y sus obligaciones. Es necesario que la responsabilidad de enforzar estos derechos venga de los empleadores y no de los trabajadores. Ya que a mi experiencia, cuando la ley pasó, yo le di a saber a mis jefes acerca de la ley, y específicamente sobre el derecho a los descansos, y ellos me mencionaron que no habían escuchado la ley y se negaron. Lamentablemente, este no es un caso aislado. Es algo que sucede, nos sucede a muchísimas otras trabajadoras como yo. Aunque la ley tiene dos años de vigencia, yo y muchas trabajadoras no hemos recibido este derecho. Por eso es importante, por eso es que la creación y la propagación de los materiales específicos para empleadores y trabajadores es muy importante. Los empleadores deben de saber sobre esta ley, y necesitamos su apoyo para que esto suceda. Muchas gracias por apoyar a nuestra industria.
Muchas gracias. And Marisol, are you present to do translation?
I will be providing the translation.
Okay, I'm sorry, Farida. You said Marisol, well?
Oh, no, Carino.
Oh, Carino. My apologies, Marisol. Carino, did you want the time to translate that, please?
Okay, sure. The only thing is, I did not catch their name.
Oh, okay. Eldica Dominguez, who's come to testify before on domestic workers. Folks might recognize her.
Okay, I'm good to go.
Thank you for that. And, Carino, I'm sorry. In the future, should I do, should we do spacing it out a little bit?
I think she was not prepared, and I had to quickly jot down what she said, but for others, I do have their statement.
Okay, wonderful. Appreciate that. Okay, please continue, Carino. Y gracias, Eldica.
Thank you. My name is Eldica Dominguez. I'm a member of the Nani Collective, and I have been a Nani for at least 10 years, and I have been part of this industry for a long time. I am excited that soon I will be part of the Seattle Domestic Worker Standards Board. And I think the most important piece is the enforcement that comes on the employers. When the law was passed to provide benefits for domestic workers, I spoke to my employers, and I specifically wanted to talk to them about the breaks, but they said that they had not heard about the law, and they denied in giving these benefits. The issue is that domestic workers are isolated, and even though the law passed two years ago, many domestic workers have not received any of the rights from the law that was passed. We need to distribute materials to inform the employers and workers about the rights and so that we can enforce this law. Thank you so much for supporting the recommendations that will be presented to you later today. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you very much, Eldica. The next person, the next three people are Marisol Ruiz, Marisa Tannenmora, and Marcos Martinez. Buenos dias, Marisol. Solamente necesitas imprimir estrellas seis y puedes empezar. Marisol? Si quieres empezar, o empuja estrellas seis una vez más?
Bueno.
Bueno.
Bueno, si me escucha?
Si, gracias. Puedes empezar.
Okay. Buenos dias. Mi nombre es Marisol Ruiz. Yo he sido niñera en la ciudad de Ciaro por más de 15 años, y es un orgullo estar en el colectivo de niñeras. Me siento muy orgullosa de estar participando en la creación de los derechos de trabajadores del hogar. Como niñera, yo me he dado cuenta de la participación que tenemos nosotros, las trabajadoras del hogar, y la importancia que tiene, ya que nosotros somos las que trabajamos y tenemos la experiencia. Por eso creo que es necesario ser parte fundamental de la conversación y la creación de implementos en el sistema, ya que puede ayudarnos en nuestros derechos. Mucha gente los conoce, pero no se están ejerciendo. Por eso es importante la creación de un sistema con beneficios portátiles, pero que también sea para nuestros empleadores, que ellos conozcan estas leyes. Por ese motivo, yo le pido al consejo que considere y aplique las recomendaciones de la mesa de estándares laborales, y que la ciudad invierta en la experiencia que nosotros tenemos. También quisiera agregar que fuera implementado en nuestro idioma, porque muchas veces las trabajadoras a veces no cuentan con una traducción o una persona que les ayude. Muchas gracias. Para mí esto es importante. Gracias.
Thank you very much. Gracias por su tiempo. And for translation, Carino.
My name is Marisol Ruiz, and I have been a babysitter in the city of Seattle for more than 15 years, and I am part of the Nani Collective. I am proud to have participated in the initial efforts in the creation of the Domestic Workers' Bill Rights. As a babysitter, I have realized that the participation of us as domestic workers is crucial and important. We have the experience, and it is necessary that we be a fundamental part of the conversation in creation and implementation of systems that help to enforce our rights and in creating a portable benefit system. I ask this council to consider and apply the recommendations of the last Labor Standards Board, especially that the city invests in the experience of the community, domestic workers, and connect with us in our language. They depend on their work and its pay, and we have limited time and resources. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Marisol. The next three speakers are Marisa Tannenmora, Marcos Martinez, and Laura Gonzalez. Good morning, Marisa.
Good morning. Can you hear me? This is Marisa Tannenmora. Folks call me Reece. I'm the Chair of the Seattle Music Commission and the Managing Director of Northwest Folklife, and I'm here to talk about, you know, the American Rescue Plan funds, the discussion today. I'm here to advocate for our sector, the arts and cultural sector, to make sure that the council considers direct investment in our sector as a part of that dispersion of funds. You know, we have many individual artists, cultural workers, production members who have been essentially unable to work for 14 months and are still looking at a long term to come back for reopening. And we also want to make sure that, you know, we consider this an investment, as these workers are part of the social cohesion and creativity that our city needs to be coming back from this time of, from this pandemic. So really want to just put my word in there for our sector, and thank you for letting me speak today.
Thank you for your time today. Good morning, Marcos. You are next.
Good morning, and thank you for having us. Good morning. I'm the Executive Director at Casa Latina, and I'm here to urge you to approve the recommendation for portable benefits for domestic workers, not as a pilot, but as a permanent mandated policy. Our coalition survey showed only 36% of domestic workers are getting paid sick under current ordinance, and only 13% of house cleaners. During COVID, workers have had an increased need for PTO. The ALIA platform has shown PTO works if enough employers participate, but not enough employers do. So ALIA shows that we need council to enact portable PTO as a mandate for employers to participate. Lastly, we have surveyed employers, and nearly 60% of them say employers should be responsible for paying domestic worker benefits, including PTO. So workers need it, it's doable, and employers support it. We urge you to follow the Standard Board's recommendation and approve portable PTO for domestic workers as a permanent mandated policy. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Marcos. The next person is Laura Gonzalez. Buenos dias, Laura. Puedes empezar, y vas a tener traducción después.
Buenos dias.
Buenos dias.
Buenos dias. Mi nombre es Laura Gonzalez, y he sido niñera en la ciudad de Ciaro por 18 años. Y bueno, de estos 18 años, 16 de ellos no tuve ningún beneficio, ninguna prestación, por desconocimiento de los estándares que la industria maneja. Sin embargo, en el tiempo de que ha pasado, de que aprendí la ley, y que ha pasado, que bueno, he estado en el colectivo de niñeras, de que soy miembro, y he aprendido un poco más a negociar con mis empleadores, la primera cosa que noto es que, bueno, mis compañeras desconocen completamente estos derechos que la ley nos brinda. Yo no he estado en situaciones tan críticas como las que la ley protege. Sin embargo, por favor, les pido apoyar los beneficios portátiles, porque en mi experiencia, el año de la pandemia fue tremendo. Yo cuando pedí tiempo porque estaba el mandato del gobernador, que no debíamos salir de casa, ellos dijeron que si yo no me presentaba a trabajar, no iban a pagarme, y durante cinco meses estuve sin recibir ningún ingreso. Y también ocurrió que incluso antes de la pandemia, un día me presenté a trabajar completamente enferma, y fueron ellos hasta que ellos se dieron cuenta de que yo tenía calentura, que me dijeron, "Vete a casa," and me pagaron únicamente las horas en que estuve presente, cuando ellos dieron cuenta de que estaba enferma. Nunca, entonces, por eso les pido que esta importancia, los últimos empleadores con los que he trabajado, les pedí que se suscribieran al IA, pero dijeron que no era, que no era un requerimiento de ley, y me negaron el acceso al IA. Y siempre, lo que yo me doy cuenta es que en esta... Y siempre, lo que yo me doy cuenta es que en esta industria de las niñeras, las inmigrantes y las personas de color, son las que no tienen ningún beneficio e incluso los que no están por ahí, pero que se pueden negociar, porque no tenemos ningún apoyo, no tenemos ningún, aparte del desconocimiento. Por eso les pido que consideren, eh, que también los empleadores deben conocer estas leyes y deben ser responsables de aplicarlas, gracias.
Muy bien, gracias. Um, y Carino.
All right. Thank you. Hello, my name is Laura Gonzalez and I have been a nanny for over 18 years. Um, and out of those 18 years, for 16 of those, I have not received any kind of benefits. In my experience, um, I have lived a lot of good moments, but um, I've learned to negotiate, but I have been able, but I haven't not had as bad situations with some of my colleagues. My colleagues have had really terrible experiences. Um, and especially during the pandemic, it has been quite tremendous with the governor's mandate to shut down the state. Um, I had to talk to my employers about um, still continuing to work. Um, and um, and that if they could help me out, they said that um, they could not help me out with any kind of support even. And I had been without any kind of income for at least five months. Um, and so when I continued to go back to work, I was, one day I realized that I was really sick and I, but I still had to continue to go into work. My, when my employers noticed that I had a temperature, they sent me home and then they decided that they would pay for my time off. I spoke to them about a program called ALEA to help provide benefits to me and they said that it, since it was not mandatory, they did not participate. Um, I realized that immigrants, people of color are many of the people, most of the people that don't have any kind of benefits or support at work and a lot of it has to do with lack of knowledge. So I ask that you uh, support domestic workers um, and their efforts to inform employers more about the law and their rights. Thank you.
Gracias. Y gracias, Laura. Muy bien. Um, the next person is Michael Greer, followed by um, Irene Armijos and Ebony Arunga. Good morning, Michael.
Uh, good morning. Hello, council members. My name is Michael Greer and I'm the president and CEO at Arts Fund and I'm encouraging you to consider American Rescue Plan Act direct aid for the arts and culture sector. Arts Fund represents over 100 arts and cultural organizations in the city of Seattle. In 2019, the creative industry provided over 67,000 jobs and over $24 billion in goods and services sold. Since the start of the pandemic, we have seen our sample of the sector lose over 50% of its workforce and is projected to see a 30% decrease in fiscal year 21 personnel expenses, along with a 65% decrease in earned income over the same period. It is estimated that our organizations will have suffered over $250 million in losses throughout the pandemic through the past 12 months alone. This industry was first to close and will be last to fully reopen and we are turning to our public institutions in order to support the recovery of the industry, its workers, and all of the economic and social benefits that it brings to the city of Seattle. Providing American Rescue Plan Act aid to this sector will do just that. Thank you very much.
Fine, thank you. Y la próxima persona es Irene Armijos. Buenos dias, Irene. Y puedes empujar estrellas seis, por favor.
Hello. Hola, soy Irene Armijos. Estoy aquí porque quiero apoyar las recomendaciones de la Mesa de Estándares Laborales, el cual uno de los puntos que se menciona es que los trabajadores del hogar no reciben beneficios básicos de enfermedad pagada y otros tipos de tiempo libre pagado de sus empleadores. En todo el tiempo que he estado trabajando, no existió la posibilidad de tener la oportunidad de descansar cuando me he sentido enferma. No me han considerado ningún día como un día de enfermedad. Para ser más precisa, en base a mi experiencia laboral, cuando tuve la oportunidad de ponerme la vacuna para el COVID, mi cuerpo reaccionó de una forma negativa. Tenía malestares en general, dolores de cabeza, brazo, fiebre, sin fuerzas. Y a pesar de la reacción que tuvo mi cuerpo y que mis jefes se dieron cuenta de que fue a causa de la vacuna y que ellos tienen conocimiento sobre cuáles podrían ser las posibles reacciones, mis jefes no se tomaron la molestia de decirme que me tomar el día libre para descansar y que continuar con mi trabajo al día siguiente, ya que esto permitiría recuperar mis fuerzas y continuar con mi trabajo al día siguiente. ¿Cree usted que esto es humano? ¿Cree que los trabajadores del hogar somos inmunes a las enfermedades por el simple hecho de ser trabajadores del hogar? Cabe mencionar que soy au pair y debería ser considerada como una trabajadora del hogar, ya que mi oficio como au pair cumple con los heberes que corresponden a una niñera. No me considero una estudiante de intercambio como las agencias de au pair nos mencionan a nosotras. Somos niñeras que trabajamos más de 40 horas a la semana y que muchas familias anfitriones nos consideran de que estamos disponibles 24 horas y 7 días por el simple hecho de vivir con ellos. Le pido a este consejo que considere las recomendaciones de la Mesa de Estándares Laborales para que los trabajadoras como yo puedan tener acceso a tiempo de enfermedad pagado. Gracias.
Gracias. Y Carino.
Good morning. I am Irene Armijos and I am here because I want to support the recommendations of the Labor Standards Board. In all the time that I have been working, I have never had the possibility of rest when I have felt ill. They have not considered any days for me to take off in case of illness. To be more precise, um, and base it on my work experience, when I had the opportunity to get the vaccine for COVID, my body reacted in a negative way. I had a general discomfort such as headache, um, pain on my arms, fever, weakness, etc. And despite that reaction that my body had and that my bosses realized that I was having due to the vaccine, and they knew that these were the possible reactions that our bodies could have because of the vaccine, they did not bother to tell me to take the day off, to rest, and to continue with my work the next day so that I could regain my strength. Do you think this is human? Do you believe that domestic workers are immune to disease simply because we are domestic workers? It is worth mentioning that I am an au pair and should be considered as a domestic worker. Since my job as an au pair, I fulfill the duties that correspond to a nanny. I don't consider myself an exchange student as the pairs program calls us. We are nannies who work more than 40 hours a week and that many host families consider us to be available 24/7 by the simple fact of us living with them. I ask this council to consider the recommendations of the Labor Standards Board so that workers like me can have access to paid sick time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Gracias, Irene. Uh, the next person is Ebony. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you for having me. My name is Ebony Arunga. I'm an arts advocate and Seattle Arts Commission member and I'm here to speak to the American Rescue Plan and advocate for the arts and culture sector. I request that the city council support the Seattle Arts Commission budget letter to the mayor. I ask that you directly invest in individual artists by allocating $15 million to serve as stimulus for artists and allocate seed funding of $1 million annually for the next three years to Hope Corps, which centers the restoration of wealth for uh, those affected disproportionately during this pandemic. I ask that you invest in cultural communities by allocating $20 million towards cultural organizations and support cultural spaces by forgiving all rent for 2021 to 2022 for arts and cultural organizations and artists who call the city landlord. I ask that you resource the cultural space agency to its fullest potential and pause financial cuts to the Office of Arts and Culture budget resulting from the diminished admissions tax collection and supplement the budget to match the 2019 budget total. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Um, and I will look for that letter that you sent to the mayor. Thank you. Um, la próxima persona es Alejandra O'Connor. Alejandra, buenos dias. Y puedes empezar.
Buenos dias. Soy Alejandra O'Connor. Soy Alejandra O'Connor, estuve niñera y au pair, ahora soy mamá de un hermoso bebé de 10 meses. Lamentablemente, los trabajadores del hogar solamente no reciben beneficios básicos como licencia de enfermedad pagada y otros tiempos de, de actuaciones pagadas por los empleados. La pandemia hizo más evidente la necesidad de reforzar esa implementación a ese derecho. Es necesario que sea obligatorio que los empleados provean este derecho para todos los trabajadores. Es decir, por medio de un sistema de beneficios o cambios de política para mejorar la ordenanza de trabajadores del hogar. Les pido al consejo, por favor, que considere estas recomendaciones de la Mesa de Estándares Laborales para que trabajadores en esta ciudad puedan tener acceso a tiempo de enfermedad pagado. Muchas gracias.
Muchas gracias. Y por la traducción, buenos.
Hi, um, I also don't have their statement prepared, so I didn't catch everything because it's going too fast, sorry. Um, hi, I am Alejandra O'Connor, I'm a nanny and an au pair, also now a mom to a 10-month-old. Um, domestic workers here do not receive such benefits as paid time off. It is necessary for all workers to have these types of benefits and I ask that um, that you work on making changes to the current set of domestic worker bail rights to improve it and make changes so that all workers are able to have benefits. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Y muchas gracias, Alejandra, por llamar hoy. Okay, the next three speakers, folks, are listed as not present. Jane Salzuki, Maria Flores, Adriana Mendoza, um, are showing up as not present. Las nombres que llamé, María, Adriana, Jane, no están presentes. So, si quieres hablar, necesitas llamar todavía el número que apareció en el email que recibiste cuando empujaste tu nombre en la sistema. Okay. Uh, so that, I believe, does conclude our translation services that we know of, but I want to thank Carino Baragán Talancón, who is on the line with us in case someone comes up. I just wanted to let you know, Carino, that is everyone on my list. If there are other folks that appear, we really want to thank you for your time and um, I know that you'll be present with us for the next presentation as well. So, thanks so much, Carino, for your translation. Okay, folks, we still have a handful of people who are ready to testify on other items here and um, I'm going to continue to call names. Dr. Quinton Morris, Kim England, and Kim Wolf, as a reminder. Uh, one minute to speak, you'll hold 10 seconds at the end of your time. And um, you also uh, need to push star six on mute yourself. So, good morning, Dr. Morris.
Morning. I'm Dr. Quentin Morris. I am the co-chair of the Seattle Arts Commission, professor at Seattle University, and also uh, executive director and founder Key to Change. Um, I'm writing, I'm speaking, of course, to talk about the recovery of arts here in Seattle. It's going to take a village to bring Seattle out of this crisis. The arts and cultural sector are uniquely positioned to unite and help bring feelings of safety and solace back to our city's residents during the crucial COVID recovery period. More than 62% of artistic and uh, creative workers have been unemployed. 95% of them have experienced significant loss of income and 71% of arts organizations indicate that the financial impact has been severe due to the pandemic. I'm asking you all, please, consider investing in individual artists by allocating $15 million to serve as a stimulus towards working creatives in Seattle. Of course, invest seed money of $1 million towards Hope Corps and invest in our cultural communities. I wrote a letter to the mayor, um, and of course, I'm going to follow up with the Seattle City Council as well um, because I want to join in the recovery of helping our city get back to a sense of normalcy with the arts and cultural uh, sector. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And um, the next person is Kim England. Good morning, Kim.
Good morning, council members. My name is Kim England. I support the Domestic Workers' Standards Board recommendations. I am the Harry Bridges-endowed Chair of Labor Studies at the University of Washington. I speak today as a proud member of the Coalition of Domestic Workers and their allies. Earlier this year, the Coalition conducted a survey of employers of domestic workers. Over 120 employers responded. I will highlight just a few of the findings. A little over 70% of employers said domestic workers should receive paid vacation time. Approximately 90% of employers say domestic workers should receive paid sick time and about 90% of employers responded that domestic workers should get health insurance. And as you already heard from Marcos Martinez, nearly 60% of employers included the hiring family among the list of who should pay for domestic work benefits. Our one-on-one conversations also show that many employers are supportive but confused about portable benefits for domestic workers. Employees told us they are keen to get clearer ground rules from city leadership and that they are eager for a platform of record-keeping compliance that is simple to use. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, and the next person is Kim Wolf. Good morning, Kim.
My name's Kimberly Wolf. I'm a long-term gig worker and a proponent of the Pay Up campaign. I support CB120069 specifically because of the language laying the foundation for the council's commitment to move forward with much-needed pay standards. We support the passing of policies which increase transparency for independent contractors and commit to the next step, a pay standard for gig workers in 2021. We were already making subminimum wages, but during COVID, when the gig companies are making billions more, they dropped our pay even further. It's now lower than ever. The discrepancy has become so vast, people are bleeding money, unable to pay their bills, that seriously hurting tens of thousands of workers, your neighbors, and our local economy. Without the long overdue pay-up standards in place, the race to the bottom in the gig economy will only pick up speed, leaving more vulnerable and marginalized workers behind. We need the council to pass the Pay Up policy for gig workers this year. Thanks for your time and supporting gig workers by moving forward without delay.
Thank you very much. Uh, we have John Burbank, followed by Elvia Cortez and Burke Sandsbury. Good morning, John.
Good morning, Chair of Muscat. And uh, my name is John Burbank. I'm the executive director of the Economic Opportunity Institute um, in Seattle. I want to extend our heartfelt uh, care and affection for Council President Lorena Gonzalez in this moment of great grief for her. She should know that we are all a feeling for her. Childcare workers, I want to talk about the American Rescue Plan and the first tranche of possible funding. Childcare workers are essential workers. Uh, they are women, particularly women of color. Childcare workers have been historically underpaid. King County childcare workers now make about $16 an hour. But childcare workers have also stepped up as essential workers and as this council has deemed that grocery store workers are essential workers and deserve a $4 an hour wage increase. We are proposing that childcare workers get a $2 an hour wage increase. That will bring their pay up to about $18.50 an hour. Um, that will cost about $6 million uh, for calendar year 2021. It would cover workers in childcare centers, family homes, child, school-aged kids, E-CAP workers. This is a fundle.
Thank you, John. Please do send the rest of your public testimony. Appreciate the time today. The next person is Elvia. Good morning. And as we look for, buenos dias. Hi, Elvia.
Buenos dias. Mi nombre es Elvia Cortez. Soy trabajadora del hogar desde hace 10 años y también organizadora de las trabajadoras del hogar de Casa Latina. Actualmente, organizo a un grupo de más de 90 trabajadoras. Cada día escucho historias difíciles que está sucediendo en sus vidas durante la pandemia por no tener acceso a beneficios como días de enfermedad o tiempo libre pagado, ya que trabajamos pocas horas a la semana. Por no tener acceso a esos beneficios, muchas de mis compañeras han seguido trabajando durante la pandemia por el miedo de perder su trabajo aunque corren el riesgo de ser contagiadas del COVID-19. Yo me siento hipotente por no poder ayudar a mis compañeras. Es por eso que estoy aquí en nombre de todas las trabajadoras del hogar, que en su mayoría son mujeres de color e inmigrantes. para decirles a ustedes que es urgente y necesario que se encuentre un mecanismo para tener el derecho al acceso a beneficios portátiles mandatorios.
Gracias.
Hace, hace dos años, las 33,000 trabajadoras del hogar en Seattle logramos salir de las sombras pero necesitamos seguir visibles. Dignidad, respeto, y beneficios portátiles mandatorios para todas las trabajadoras del hogar. Gracias por escucharme.
Thank you. Y, cariño, gracias por la traducción, si puedes.
Hi, my name is Elia Cortés, and I have been a domestic worker for more than 10 years. I'm also an organizer of domestic workers from Casa Latina. At the moment, I organize a group of more than 90 workers. Every day, I hear difficult stories right now during the pandemic about not having access to benefits like sick days or time off, since we work such few hours. Because we don't have access to these benefits, many of my colleagues have continued working during the pandemic for fear of losing their work, even with the risk of being infected with COVID-19. I feel powerless that I'm not able to help my colleagues. That is why I'm here on behalf of all domestic workers. Most of them are women of color and immigrants to tell you that it is urgent and necessary that a mechanism for portable benefits be made mandatory. Two years ago, the 33,000 domestic workers in Seattle, we were able to come out of the showers, shadows, but we need to stay visible. Dignity, respect, and benefits must be mandatory for all workers, for all domestic workers. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you for your time. Gracias, Elvia. The next three speakers are Burke Stansbury, Delmia Argüeta, and Enriqueta Vega.
Hi, my name is Burke Stansbury, and I'm speaking today to urge the council to implement a portable benefit system for domestic workers. My son was born with a severe neuromuscular disease. He has a tracheostomy. He's a wheelchair. He requires constant care. We have a nurse in our home five days a week to help with that care. We also employ a house cleaner who comes once or twice a month. I'm sure that working in someone else's home is a challenging experience. My partner and I do our best to provide a safe and comfortable work environment, but it still means constantly navigating someone else's personal space. Meanwhile, most domestic workers did not receive benefits. The nurses who work in our home are paid through a private agency, yet we still feel the responsibility to ensure they have fair compensation and benefits. For the woman who comes to clean our home, we know that benefits are not part of her work, which includes having many different families as employers. That's why we worked with the organization hand-in-hand a few years ago to set up an account through the ALIA platform to help her with benefits. Yet in order to effectively provide benefits like paid time off to workers, we need clear information from the city about the laws and clear guidance about what platforms we can use to provide those benefits. We can't...
Thank you very much. Please send in the rest of your comments as well. Delmis, good morning. Delmis Argüeta. Followed by Enriqueta Vega. Just looking on my end for the squares to pop up. Welcome. Delmis, if you can push star six one more time.
She may need Spanish. Delmis, oprima estrella seis para salir de mudo.
Una vez más, estrella seis, si puedes empujar, estrella seis una vez más. Ah, perfecto. Gracias por estar aquí con nosotros. Puedes empezar.
Buenos días. Mi nombre es Delmis Argüeta. Limpio casas y cuido niños desde hace cinco años. Soy miembro de Casa Latina y fui promotora de la Carta de Derechos de las Trabajadoras del Hogar en el primer año que entró en vigor, que fue en julio del 2019. Apenas estábamos asimilando que teníamos algunos derechos laborales cuando llega la pandemia y nos obliga a ver la necesidad de tener beneficios de días de enfermedad pagados. Por el COVID, me quedé sin trabajo, sin un ingreso, ningún tipo de beneficios. Si las trabajadoras tuviéramos derechos a día de enfermedad o tiempo libre pagado, por lo menos no tendríamos el estrés por los gastos. Yo soy miembro de una plataforma de beneficios portátiles llamado ALIA, en la cual algunos de mis clientes se registraron para colaborar. Y yo muy emocionada, pero como no es obligatoria, solamente uno de ellos me siguió aportando. Hay varios modelos de beneficios portátiles que funcionan. Es por eso que pido este consejo, que, por favor, apoye la recomendación de que podamos tener una plataforma de beneficios portátiles que sea mandatory para las trabajadoras del hogar aquí en Seattle. Muchas gracias.
Good morning. My name is Delmis Argüeta, and I am an immigrant domestic worker. I've cleaned houses and taken care of children for five years. I'm a member of Casa Latina, and I was an advocate for the Bill of Rights for Domestic Workers in the first year when it came into effect in July 2019. We were just assembling that we had had some basic labor rights when the pandemic hit us and forced us to see the need for paid sick benefits. Due to the COVID-19, I left my job without, and now I have no income or any kind of benefits. Domestic workers were entitled to sick days or paid time off. At least the stress of not having income will be less. I'm a member of a portable benefits platform called ALIA, in which some of my clients signed up to contribute an amount every time I went to work. And that thrilled me a lot, but since it is not mandatory, only one of them now continues to contribute. And I would like all of my employers to contribute. There are several models of portable benefits that work. That is why I ask that the council support the recommendation around a portable benefits platform that is mandatory for domestic workers here in Seattle. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Gracias, Delmis. Y la próxima persona es Enriqueta Vega. The next person is Enriqueta Vega.
Bueno.
Bueno. Bienvenidos. Sí.
Buenos días. Buenos días a todos los representantes. Mi nombre es Enriqueta Vega. Soy trabajadora del hogar por más de diez años y soy miembro de Casa Latina. Nunca me había sentido tan vulnerable como en este tiempo de pandemia. Ha sido un caos quedarme sin trabajo y sin protecciones. Estando en mi casa sin trabajo sentía que mi vida dependía de un hilo que en cualquier momento se arrebentaría. También me di cuenta qué tan importantes son para nosotras las trabajadoras del hogar los beneficios portátiles. Trabajamos para diferentes empleadores, lo cual resulta difícil tener beneficios como días de enfermedad pagados, tiempo libre pagado, desempleo, o una seguridad médica. Las trabajadoras del hogar estamos unidas, luchando sin parar para construir una sociedad en la cual tengamos los derechos y el respeto que merecemos. Por eso pido hoy a ustedes su apoyo total para las recomendaciones. Pero en lo personal, la recomendación de encontrar un mecanismo para tener acceso a días de enfermedad pagados. Haría un cambio enorme a la vida de todas las trabajadoras del hogar. Gracias por escucharme.
Gracias por estar aquí con nosotros.
Good morning to all council people. My name is Enriqueta Vega, and I have been a domestic worker for more than 10 years. I'm also a member of Casa Latina. I have never felt so vulnerable as in this time during the pandemic. It has been chaos to be without work and without protections. Being at home without work, I felt that my life depended on a thin thread that at any moment would break. I also realize how important portable benefits are to domestic workers. We work for different employers, so it's difficult to have benefits such as paid time off, paid sick time, unemployment, or health insurance. Domestic workers are united, fighting nonstop to the society in which we have the rights and respect we deserve. That is why I ask you today for your full support for the recommendation. But personally, the recommendation to find a mechanism to access paid sick days would make a huge change to the lives of all domestic workers. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Gracias. Folks, I want to let you know we have reached the end of our 45-minute time. I'm going to ask for your willingness to extend the public comment for another 15 minutes. We only have 11 more people signed up for public testimony. That should give us time for translation if needed. If there's no objection, the public comment will be extended. I see a thumbs up for 15 more minutes. I appreciate the support. You know, people have been preparing for this public testimony, so thank you. Okay, vamos a seguir, y tenemos 15 más minutos por testimonio. Martha Barrientos, followed by Rick Araúluse and Sarah Wilk. Good morning, Martha. Buenos días, Martha. ¿Estás con nosotros, Martha Barrientos? Vamos a esperar un momento, y después de Martha sería Rick.
Martha, debes oprimir estrellas seis en el teléfono para salir de mudo. Okay.
Aquí está Martha. Buenos días, Martha.
Buenos días. Okay, buenos días, miembros del consiglio. Mi nombre es Martha Barrientos. Limpio casas desde hace diez años. Soy miembro de Casa Latina. En la semana trabajo pocas veces, limpio casa de dos o tres veces por semana. Pero tengo seis empleadores al mes. En este tiempo de pandemia, me quedé sin trabajo, sin ningún tipo de ingreso, con mucho estrés y sin tener la oportunidad de recibir beneficios de días de enfermedad. Porque este sistema está diseñado solo para un solo empleador. Hay muchas, pero muchas otras trabajadoras que están en la misma situación. Pero la urgente necesidad de poder acceder a esos beneficios. Y les pido de corazón a ustedes que sigan activando a este sector laboral, que sigue siendo siempre culpable y oprimido. Necesitamos su apoyo para tener un mécanico de tiempo y de pago o beneficio portátil mandatorio. No perdemos un piroto porque ya existen varios modos. Que existan por la de la lista. Por eso le podemos dar...
Martha.
Sí. Sí.
Ah, es difícil oír voz, pero si quieres seguir...
Sí, que es difícil oír mi voz.
Sí, pero tenemos la traducción, y creo que si Carino tenía las palabras, vamos a oírlo en inglés también. Pero si puedes terminar porque su tiempo se acabó.
Sí, 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 sí. Que por eso le pedimos humildemente que Seattle siga mando un ejemplo a nivel nacional en los derechos laborales para las trabajadoras del hogar.
Muy bien.
Confiamos en ustedes. Gracias.
Okay, muy bien, gracias. Y, cariño, no sé si tienes las palabras. Okay, muy bien.
Good morning, members of the council. My name is Martha Barrientos. I have been cleaning houses for 10 years, and I am a member of Casa Latina. During the week, I work few hours because I clean houses two or three times per week, but I have six employers. During this pandemic, I was left without a job, without any kind of income, with a lot of stress and without having the opportunity to receive sick days benefits because the system is designed only for workers who have only one employer. Just like me, there are many, many other domestic workers who are in the same situation. That is why I see the urgent need to be able to access those benefits. I ask you from the bottom of my heart to continue supporting this labor sector that remains vulnerable and oppressed. We need your support to have a paid time mechanism or portable benefit be made mandatory. We do not want a pilot because there are already several models that work, such as the ALIA benefits platform, which I form a part of. But it's not mandatory. I humbly ask that Seattle continue to be an example at the national level on labor rights for domestic workers. We trust you. Thank you.
Oops. Gracias, Martha. Okay, folks, as a reminder, we only have about 10 minutes left, so you are going to have your lines cut off at one minute. That includes for the Spanish speakers as well, but we will also have another minute for translation after that. The next three speakers are Rick, Sarah Wilk, and Donna Hutchinson. Good afternoon. Good morning, Rick.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you for checking.
Oh, yeah, thanks. Yeah, I don't have prepared remarks, but I'm a member of the Seattle Arts Commission, and I want to strongly recommend the commission's budget proposal for the funding, the American Rescue Plan. Just want to state, you know, as a member of the arts community since 1994, and I moved here and from Los Angeles before that, just want to restate generally how important, utterly vital, I believe, that the arts are to the community, to funding, to taxpaying, to creating a vibrant and a vital ecosystem for us as a community. And I just recommend strongly that going forward with the necessary, incredibly necessary funding and to advocate for arts in general. It's an investment, and thank you for your time.
Oh, thank you for your time. And the next person, Sarah. Good morning.
My name is Sarah Wilke, and I'm the co-chair of the Seattle Arts Commission. And I'm asking today for allocation of direct aid from the American Rescue Plan to the arts and culture sector. The direct aid for this sector was not included in the CARES Act, and we've really seen the impact. As you've heard before, more than 62% of artists and creative workers are fully unemployed. 95% have received significant income loss, and 71% of arts organizations have considered to receive a severe financial impact this past year. You know, this is the very sector that can be and should be really foundational to the Seattle recovery right now. We have the skills and the talent and the ability to be able to bring people together for mutual benefit, common growth, and understanding. But we can't do that if we don't have the stability and the support to be in a healthy place ourselves. And so that is one of the reasons that I am asking for that direct allocation. Thank you.
Thank you. And the next person is Donna Hutchinson, followed by Ashley Thomas. And Donna, just star six to unmute yourself. Okay, after Donna, we have Ashley Thomas, Michael Wolf, and Sandra Nelson. Do we have Donna with us? If not, let's go ahead and move on to Ashley, please. And Donna, if you're still there, we'll come back to you.
Good morning. I want to thank the committee for including $2.5 million for housing stability and resident services in the ARPA budget. I work in resident services at Community Roots Housing, and we provide affordable housing to over 200 people throughout Seattle. We work to connect residents to life-affirming resources that support their housing stability and community connection. Our resident services staff is stretched beyond capacity. Currently, we only are able to provide one resident services professional for every 400 residents. An investment of $2.5 million in 2021 will help address the negative economic impacts of the pandemic by helping our neighbors, and especially our low-income neighbors and communities of color that are hardest hit, get them connected to economic, social, mental health, and educational opportunities. When residents have access to resources to thrive and not just survive, it creates cascading impacts of stability and sense of community. Thank you again for including this in the ARPA budget.
Excellent, thank you. And the next person is Michael Wolf.
Good morning. This is Michael Wolf. I'm the executive director of Drive Forward, and I'm here to testify on Council Bill 120069, the Independent Contractors Transparency Bill. Drive Forward does support transparency for app-based gig workers in their work. But this bill, as usual, is a little convoluted in how it gets there and doesn't really, isn't really practical for how app-based gig workers do their work on a daily basis and creates complications for them in how it gets to the transparency. We would love to be able to work with council to make this a better bill that all drivers could get behind and all companies could get behind. And I think that's a pretty easy lift to do. And so we'd love to work with you in the future to be able to get this bill to be something that everyone could get behind. Transparency isn't an issue that anyone opposes. It's just a matter of getting the legislation correct. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. The next three are Sandra Nelson, Holly Jacobson, and Vanessa Villabos. Sandra. Sandra, are you with us? Star six, unmute yourself. And we're still looking for Donna Hutchinson as well. Okay, I am not seeing Sandra pop up. All right, let's move on to Holly. Holly Jacobson. Holly, are you with us?
Good morning. This is Holly Jacobson. Thanks for taking the extra time to allow additional comment, council. I am the CEO of Path with Art and have the honor of sitting on the Seattle Arts Commission. I'm here to advocate for the arts and cultural sector for the investment in the American Rescue Plan as a means to support a more equitable, meaningful community recovery. We know that a vibrant art sector is necessary for a thriving community and city. History has made this case and we can make this case at every level, at the individual level and at the societal level and yet at the economic level. Path with Art, for example, provides arts opportunities to low-income individuals from over 50 social service partners as a means to recover from trauma, be that trauma from racism, violence, abuse, homelessness, substance use disorder, or poverty. The arts help our participant artists connect back to themselves and our community. The arts also connect us with each other to see each other through the story and human experience versus statistics. They are powerful means to foster empathy and understanding in an increasingly fractured and divided world. And the arts impact our economic well-being as well. There is strong.
Thank you very much, Holly. The next three speakers are Vanessa Villavos, Karen Toring, and Rico Alvia. And then the last person is Erica Lanier. Vanessa, are you with us? And we're still looking for Sandra Nelson, too. Good morning. Just star six.
Okay, hello, can you hear me?
I can, Vanessa. Thank you.
Oh, hi. Thank you so much, council members, for extending this time to allow for a little bit of commentary. My name is Vanessa Villavos. I am an independent bi-pack artist, an independent contractor. I know you're looking at some of those things today, too. And also a part of the Seattle Arts Commission. I just want to echo the previous members' support for arts funding and really asking for this $15 million direct allocation to the creative workers as well as a hopeful minimal allocation of $20 million to our cultural institutions. As an artist, and I just want to leave you with this, you know, really, really think about what has gotten us and your community through the pandemic, you know, the music, the beautiful design you see daily, trips to the aquarium if you have to pass through. All of those little moments are crafted, are premeditated, and created for audiences to experience. The 2022 and 2023 year would still hold Seattle as a destination city if you can please prioritize arts funding this time around. We were left out at the.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Karen Toring, good morning. Star six, unmute yourself. Hi, Karen.
Hi, this is Karen. Hi, this is Karen Toring and I'm calling to talk about the American Rescue Plan and the allocation for funding. I support all of the previous speakers who spoke in relation to supporting arts and cultural workers. But I'd also like for the council to consider prioritizing indigenous and people of color arts and cultural organizations who are, we can probably name on one or two hands. I'd also like to mention the small business opportunities that might be available with this funding. And I would like for the city to consider pathways to funding that are grants, not loans, and to make them fast. A lot of times, you know, there are allocations of funding to city groups, associations, and individual artists, and we can't float 30 days. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Makes sense. Rico Abila, good morning. Thanks for waiting. And Rico, I see you. I think you just need to hit star six one more time. Star six. And then the last person will be Erica, if you want to get teed up, Erica. Rico, I see you on my screen here. Just star six to unmute yourself. Okay, well, let's keep Rico up and we will go to Erica and we will look for Rico to come off mute. Erica? Okay, folks, I think we're nearing the end here. Rico, Erica, and Sandra, I am not seeing you pop up on my screen. I'm going to give it one more second here for my tea. I heard somebody. If you just came off mute, feel free to introduce yourself. Rico, I see you on mute. Erica, I don't see you on the line here. And I am not seeing Sandra. So, folks, that will conclude our public comment for today. I want to thank everybody. Sandra, wait before we go. And Erica, I see you there. Let's go ahead, since you waited this long. Let's give you a minute to testify. Sandra, you are first. Can you hear me, Sandra? Are you on mute on your end?
Oh, can you hear me?
I can hear you, Erica. Go ahead, Erica. And Sandra, you'll be next. I saw you go back on mute. Okay, Erica, let's do this.
Good morning, council members, and thank you for the extended time. My name is Erica Lanier. I'm the executive director of Seed of Life Center for Early Learning Childcare Centers located in South Seattle. As a childcare provider for the past 24 years, we've been, and most recently since March 2020, we've been working through the pandemic as essential workers. We have been providing childcare, incorporated remote learning, adapted services to provide response supports for children, social, emotional, academic mentoring, technology, and basic support for all of our communities served. We have been the backbone of the working community to provide essential childcare services without receiving additional financial support. So we're asking for the childcare community, especially us that have been open during the pandemic, to give a $2 compensation for increasing childcare workers. Thank you.
You're on mute, chair.
Thank you, council president. Sandra, I see you listed as present still. And Rico, we're trying to wrap this up, folks. If you can hit star six to unmute yourself and you've been waiting this whole time. So I want to respect your time as well. Okay, folks, I'm not hearing you come off the line. I want to thank everybody for being here for vocal testimony. I want to thank Karine Baragon for your translation services this morning. We really appreciate it. And we do know that there was a lot of folks who had been wanting to provide public testimony and wanted, needed translation as well. Thank you very much for your extra time this morning, colleagues. Madam Clerk, will you please read into the record item number one?
The item number one, Domestic Workers Standards Board Recommendations for Briefing and Discussion.
Okay, colleagues, this is where I'm going to ask you to go ahead and refer back to the email that I recirculated again this morning. You will need to choose a translation service interpretation in English and Spanish is available. You should be able to click on that button on the bottom that looks like a little globe. Please select the language in which you'd like to listen. Today's options are English and Spanish. You will choose a language and you will only be able to hear folks in that chosen language in the quote room that you're in. I want to thank.
Escucho, Karine, gracias.
And I want to thank Karine Baragon for the translation services. And we really would not be able to have done this without her expertise. We want to thank council president IT and the clerk's office and Farid de Cuevas, who've been working to systematize our services here. And we are going to continue to work on it so that everybody can hear the translation services. If you have any questions, please do hold your questions until the end of the presentation so that the translation services don't get interrupted. Please remember, presenters, to speak as slow as you can so the interpreter can capture what you're saying and try to avoid using acronyms as those are difficult to translate. For the audience, the presentation will be streamed on Seattle Channel in English. For our audience that is joining us via Zoom, you will need to select the chosen language at the bottom of the presentation. Does anybody have any questions? Alguien tiene unas preguntas. Necesitas escoger el idioma que quieres escuchar en el globo or en al final, al fondo de su screen para escoger el idioma que quieres. Alguien tiene unas preguntas? Wow, no questions. Muy bien, no preguntas. Vamos a empezar entonces. Gracias, Farid, por las instrucciones. Thank you, Farid, for the instructions. And today, colleagues, we have with us presenters Sylvia González, co-chair of the Domestic Workers Standards Board, Dana Barnett, co-chair of Domestic Workers Standards Board, Jasmine Moraja, Office of Labor Standards, and Karina Bull from the Central Staff. Attendees on this line also include Domestic Workers Bill of Rights Coalition members, who are here mostly for questions. I know one person is going to also be adding some context here today, but I want to honor their presence and their work as well. Emily Dills, Teresa Hill, Dana Barnett, Jordan Goldwig, Lonnie Todd, Andra Kessler, Liz Hunter Keller, Rosio Alvia, Danielle Alvarado, Doris García Flores, Andrew Cashap, and Veronica Faschaneli. Gracias por estar aquí con nosotros también. Thank you for being here with us as well. I will turn it over to the presenters for today. Long-awaited presentation. And with that, thank you for the translation once again.
Councilmember Mosqueta, I just want to call it out for the record. Bailey Freeman, I'm actually the current co-chair. So Sylvia and I will be the main presenters for today.
I appreciate that. I'm sorry if I said that wrong.
That's okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Bailey, and thank you, Sylvia.
Ah, gracias, Bailey. Hola, buenos días. Mi nombre es Sylvia González y voy a introducir un poquito sobre la justicia del lenguaje. La justicia del lenguaje es justicia social. Es un derecho humano de toda persona al poder hablar en la lengua que se sienta más cómoda en un momento determinado. El propósito de crear un espacio multilingüe, dinámico y funcional es permitir que las personas se expresen en la lengua que prefieran, sea cual sea, y que otras personas en la sala puedan escuchar y entender lo que dice, sea que hablen o no el mismo idioma. La lengua es un elemento crucial del proceso de lucha por una sociedad más justa e inclusiva. Con excesiva frecuencia suceden los movimientos de justicia social y ello a pesar de nuestras mejores intenciones que reproducimos las mismas formas de dominación lingüística que operan en la cultura dominante en Estados Unidos. Como en buena parte del mundo, el inglés ocupa esta posición dominante. Gracias a este Concilio por crear ese espacio para poder expresarnos en la lengua que mejor nos sentimos cómodas. Nuevamente, mi nombre es Sylvia González. Soy una de las co-chairs del Standard Board y represento a las trabajadoras del hogar, específicamente a las que limpiamos casas. Y hoy vamos a estar hablando de la presentación de las recomendaciones. Next, por favor, la siguiente. Slides. Okay, vamos a introducir un poquito. El Standard Board fue establecido en el 2019 como parte de la ordenanza de trabajadores domésticos de Seattle. La Junta de Normas para Trabajadores del Hogar proporciona un lugar para que los trabajadores, empleadores, hogares privados, organizaciones de trabajadores, y el público consideren y sugieran formas de mejorar las condiciones laborales de todas las trabajadoras del hogar. Y aquí tenemos las personas que conformamos parte del Standard Board. Sylvia González, que yo soy, y Bailey, mi compañera, estamos al frente como co-chair. Y también menciono a mis demás compañeros que también nos están acompañando en este espacio virtual que se ha convertido tan famoso últimamente, verdad? Dana, Emily Dills, Jordan, Ethel Bina, Teresa, Liz, Andra, and Lani, y compañeros que también fueron parte, pero ahora ya nos dejaron por mejores condiciones, quizás. Alaya, Candace, y Víctor Lozada. Todos estos formamos parte del Standard Board de las trabajadoras del hogar. Adelante, la siguiente, por favor. Wow. No sé si recuerden esta foto que varias estuvieron ahí donde hicieron su firma. Me trae buenos recuerdos, verdad? Qué es lo que creemos, verdad? La Junta de Normas para las trabajadoras del hogar propia un mundo en el que las trabajadoras del hogar estén informadas y apoyadas y las entidades contratantes sean responsables y estén reguladas. También creemos en que se cultiven mejores relaciones entre las trabajadoras y entidades contratantes en todos los idiomas y culturas. También creemos que las pólizas sean claras, que se apliquen de manera constante y que mejoren significativamente la vida de los trabajadores del hogar. Y eso no nada más quedó ahí en el 2019, verdad? Cuando ganamos. Por eso es que escuchamos tantos comentarios públicos ahorita de una necesidad grande de que esto siga avanzando y no quede nada más en lo poquito. Para mí es poquito lo que se ganó, verdad? Somos ambiciosas las trabajadoras del hogar y por eso creemos en que merecemos más y estamos aquí luchando para esto. Mi compañera Bailey sigue con los siguientes slides.
Thank you, Sylvia. In our presentation today, we will discuss our recommendations and the issues that they seek to resolve, including barriers to outreach, enforcement, and implementation. We will also touch on next steps as we expect to work closely with council and city staff on the implementation and development of these recommendations. Afterwards, we will, time permitting, we will invite other board members and members of the Domestic Workers Coalition to help with the short discussion that will follow. Next slide, please. Outreach and education has been going on in earnest since the ordinance went into effect. Despite the Office of Labor Standards' efforts and accomplishments regarding outreach, including reaching thousands of hiring entities and workers so far, there has only been one investigation out of 15 inquiries. This is not due to lack of interest or action from the Office of Labor Standards to perform this work, but due to the very real barriers that we will discuss in the next slides. Next slide, please. So let's talk about the barriers to implementation of this unique ordinance. Domestic workers are a unique workforce with no centralized networks. Some workers don't see themselves as domestic workers and even more homeowners and parents don't see themselves as employers. These individuals may encounter materials about the ordinance, but assume it does not apply to them. Fear and mistrust is a very real issue for workers, both in engaging with city officials as well as concern about retaliation from their employers. There is no anonymity when you are making a complaint as the sole employee and referrals and references are critical to future employment in this word-of-mouth-driven industry. Finally, there are tens of thousands of domestic workers in Seattle and even more hiring entities who speak many languages. Reaching all of them and building trust in their communities is a massive task and one that requires significant and consistent support. I will turn it back to Sylvia to discuss working conditions.
Gracias, Bailey. Hablando de barreras y condiciones laborales, verdad? Una de las principales son salarios bajos y sin beneficios. Hemos estado hablando tanto de los beneficios, verdad? Me encanta cómo las compañeras se armaron de valor y vinieron a decir aquí a luchar por lo que ellas creen, verdad? Y tenemos derechos. Más de la mitad de los trabajadores del hogar luchan por pagar el alquiler y otras facturas, verdad? Y sin hablar de poner comida en la mesa para sus niños, especialmente ahora con la pandemia que muchos se quedaron sin trabajo, verdad? Los trabajadores del hogar van a trabajar enfermos porque carecen de beneficios como días de enfermedad pagados o simplemente un tiempo libre pagado porque se sienten con tanta ansiedad y tampoco tienen atención médica. Entonces, por eso, por esas barreras de salarios bajos y sin beneficios, seguimos aquí, verdad? Luchando por eso. El trabajo del hogar durante el COVID-19. El trabajo del hogar durante el COVID-19, los trabajadores domésticos hemos sido trabajadores esenciales, que hemos estado enfrente de la barda, verdad? Luchando sobre eso para proveer cuidado infantil, asistente, cuidar a nuestros enfermos, también a los papás de las familias, limpiar sus casas, desinfectar sus casas. Todo esto para que esta economía siga adelante, verdad? Las personas que dejan a sus niños en cuidado de las nanis para poder ir a trabajar. ¿Quién de ustedes aquí no tiene una nanny, verdad? ¿Quién de los del Consilio no tiene alguien que le limpie su casa? Todo esto lo estuvimos haciendo aún con el COVID. Entonces hemos estado al frente de la batalla. Por eso es que seguimos exigiendo derechos como cualquier otro trabajador, verdad? Entonces, los trabajadores latinos son seis veces más, tienen seis veces más la posibilidad de morir por el COVID y lo hemos visto en las estadísticas, verdad? Entonces, por eso es que estamos aquí exigiendo, pidiendo que sean consideradas las recomendaciones que estamos presentando aquí. Siguiente slides, por favor. Y estamos proponiendo cuatro, cuatro recomendaciones, verdad? Que en realidad no son muchas para todo lo que nosotros necesitamos, verdad? Como cualquier otro trabajador. Invertir en la experiencia de la comunidad y generar confianza. Ese es el número uno. El número dos es proporcionar materiales específicos para los trabajadores del hogar y las entidades contratantes. Yo escuché hace un rato un comentario público de alguien que dijo que el empleador no sabía que había derechos para los trabajadores del hogar. Entonces, es tan importante cómo hacer llegar esos materiales a toda esta gente. El número tres es implementar cambios en las políticas para mejorar la ordenanza de las trabajadoras del hogar. Y el número cuatro es aprobar el derecho a tiempo libre pagado portátil para las trabajadoras del hogar. Entonces, estas son las cuatro recomendaciones que estamos nosotros haciendo. Cada recomendación tiene sus partes, de las cuales vamos a estar metiéndonos un poquito más adentro Bailey y yo. Y yo voy a empezar un poquito con la primera. Si quieren pasar la siguiente slides, por favor. Esta, invertir en la experiencia de la comunidad y crear confianza. Creo yo que es tan importante porque nuestra experiencia es lo que está haciendo. Experiencia y necesidades es lo que está haciendo los cambios para poder seguir pidiendo las recomendaciones. Pero nuestra experiencia también tiene un valor, un significado, verdad? Y es tan difícil a veces conseguir que los compañeros den su tiempo porque le sale un trabajito, verdad? Y prefieren irse al trabajito, están entre ir al trabajo o contar su experiencia. Entonces, por eso pedimos ampliar significativamente los fondos para el alcance de las trabajadoras del hogar. Y eso genera construir sobre la confianza de las organizaciones, esas organizaciones que pueden llegar más a las trabajadoras o trabajadores del hogar. Un ejemplo, yo puedo hablar de casa latina, verdad? Es mucho más fácil que las trabajadoras vengan a nosotros porque creen en casa latina. Entonces, por eso es tan importante crear esa confianza. Cerrar las frechas, cerrar frechas de las comunicaciones que existen con las comunidades como africanas y Apechaya, la comunidad asiática. Entonces, cómo poder acercarnos más a esas comunidades para escuchar de ellas e invirtiendo un poquito más en esto es cómo podremos llegar a estas organizaciones y poder alcanzar más a la comunidad. Y hablar de compensar a los trabajadores por su experiencia. Pagar a miembros de la Junta del Standard Board que son trabajadoras del hogar. Financiar encuestas pagadas y entrevistas de las trabajadoras del hogar para informar los esfuerzos de las juntas de la Oficina de Labor Standard. Ya estoy mezclando mi español. Y yo pongo de testimonio y de experiencia Ethel Bina. Ethel Bina es una compañera que es caregiver y forma parte de la Mesa de Estándares Laborales, pero tiene muchos retos con estar en la Mesa de Estándares Laborales, donde puede traer una experiencia enorme, pero también está que tiene que ir a trabajar. ¿Viene a la mesa o va a su trabajo? ¿Aporta a la mesa comida? ¿Paga sus rentas? O está en la mesa al Standard Board. Entonces, ella trae un testimonio tan importante aquí para hacer un poquito de conciencia sobre este punto. Adelante el video.
Hola, mi nombre es Ethel Bina Hauser. Soy de origen caribeña y trabajadora del hogar. Fui de personas mayores desde hace 15 años. Desde hace un año tuve la oportunidad de participar en el Standard Board de los trabajadores para la carta de los derechos de los trabajadores del hogar. Elevar la voz de otras trabajadoras de mi comunidad. Pero ha sido difícil para mí asistir a todas las reuniones que se llevan a cabo. Siendo trabajadora del hogar, los salarios son demasiado bajos. Son básicos y no hay mucho trabajo. A veces tengo que decidir entre asistir a la reunión o ir a trabajar. Yo las cuentas y las rentas, señores. Si tuviera la oportunidad de recibir alguna conversación por estar en la reunión sería de mucha ayuda. Nuestra pasión y experiencia como trabajadoras del hogar que aportamos a la Mesa de Standard Board merecen ser reconocidas y valoradas. Es por eso quiero a ustedes, a ustedes, su apoyo. Esta recomendación, de esta recomendación. Los derechos de las trabajadoras del hogar son demasiado importantes. Hola.
Gracias a Ethel Bina. Y cabe mencionar que pedimos permiso a la persona con la cual estaba trabajando ella. ¿Por qué ese día ella estaba trabajando y íbamos a hacer el video? Entonces, nos introducimos ahí a la casa de la persona donde ella estaba trabajando para agarrar un poquito del tiempo de ella para poder grabar este video. Entonces, es bien importante, ¿no? Los derechos de las trabajadoras del hogar importan, importan mucho como lo mencionó ella. Gracias Ethel Bina. Y le paso a Bailey para la siguiente diapositivas.
There we go. So, thank you Sylvia. So, new materials and increased materials for outreach are critical to reaching workers and hiring entities. Language barriers and the privacy of individual home workspaces make outreach very difficult. We need funding to expand mailed materials to every home, a strategy used by other city departments, to reach more employers and workers where they are and provide these materials in languages they are comfortable with. The current funding for the Office of Labor Standards outreach is not enough at the scale that we need. We also want to highlight the importance of third-party platforms who connect workers and other hiring entities. These platforms are large corporations who are disconnected from the daily struggles of those on the ground and their practices leave many workers vulnerable and hiring entities ill-informed. The good news is that these companies are often covered by our ordinance as hiring entities themselves. Strong city representation insisting that these platforms take responsibility for educating their clients and protecting workers can change the industry for the better. These platforms, when held accountable, can be an incredible resource for changing the culture of this invisible work and improving enforcement methods. Next slide, please. Access to structured healthcare is the number-one requested benefit by workers based on our local research and that of the National Domestic Workers Alliance. We ask that the city researches ways to provide affordable structured healthcare to workers, exploring various models and educating hiring entities on their options. Domestic work is taxing on one's body and can result in short- and long-term injuries, and these workers have an especially difficult time obtaining the necessary healthcare. They work through injuries because they can't afford to miss a shift, let alone go to the doctor. COVID has made this exponentially more dangerous to workers and their families. Even if they have insurance, language and technology barriers increase the difficulty of negotiating our current healthcare systems. Researching ways to improve on these problems and helping to lobby state legislation to expand current offerings to all individuals in Washington will improve lives across the board. Next slide, please. Policy changes. The policy changes that we have outlined in our detailed recommendations are designed to make our ordinance stronger and make enforcement and outreach easier and clearer. We simply seek to eliminate any exceptions to the domestic worker ordinance coverage on both sides. No workers excluded from coverage and no hiring entities excluded from compliance. This adjustment to the ordinance is supported by the relevant local union representatives as well as workers. A further notice of rights provided by employers and third-party platforms will help ensure that workers understand their rights. If you don't know what your rights are, it's harder to tell when they're being violated until it's too late. Regarding the new independent contractor legislation, we ask that the city do its due diligence to make sure that all the vulnerable workers affected by this legislation be engaged directly to make sure that the process helps them in practice and that their concerns are taken into consideration. I will pass it back to Sylvia to discuss portable benefits. Sylvia, you're on mute.
Gracias Bailey. Y vamos a seguir hablando de beneficios portátiles, verdad? Y seguiremos levantando la voz sobre los beneficios portátiles para tener derecho a tiempo libre pagado. Derecho a un tiempo libre pagado con goce de sueldo para todas las trabajadoras. Es tan importante para garantizar que las trabajadoras del hogar puedan dedicar tiempo y no nada más tiempo a ellas, sino tiempo a sus seres queridos. Ahora con la pandemia nos afectó tanto que aún así gente enferma iba a trabajar. Gente no podía ir a trabajar porque tenía que quedar a cuidarse a sus enfermos, verdad? Las trabajadoras del hogar merecen el derecho a una licencia pagada portátil con goce de sueldo por días de enfermedad pagados, día de descanso y otros que puedan necesitar. Los beneficios portátiles son beneficios que se pueden pagar o acumular de muchas entidades contratantes a una cuenta de un trabajador. Yo sé que lo podemos hacer, necesitamos su apoyo, verdad? Ya que sabemos que Filadelfia lo está haciendo. San Francisco nada más está esperando como que ¿qué estamos haciendo nosotros? Para de ahí puntear, verdad? Para salir de ahí, salir a seguir trabajando. Solamente están esperando qué es lo que estamos haciendo. Porque nosotros CiARo, en esta industria laboral, hemos sido pioneros, verdad? Fuimos la primer ciudad que tuvimos beneficios portátiles y lo más ambicioso, que hay una Mesa de Estándares Laborales que ninguna otra parte del país hay. Entonces, la licencia portátil de moneda para todos los trabajadores del hogar debe de ser obligatoria y respaldada por una aplicación estricta y sencilla, verdad? Así de fácil y sencillita porque muchos de los trabajadores, como mencionaron hace rato, son personas de color, personas inmigrantes, que tienen muchos miedos y necesitan algo sencillo y muchos retos con la tecnología. Quizás ustedes vieron cuántos retos tuvieron alguna de mis compañeras para accesar, verdad? El simple hecho de apachurra, la estrella y el número seis. A veces es tan complicado. Necesitamos una plataforma de beneficios sencilla, que no sea tan complicada para que todas mis compañeras trabajadoras del hogar puedan acceder a esto. Gracias. El siguiente slide, por favor. Derecho a licencia portátil con goce de sueldo para todas las trabajadoras del hogar. Las malas noticias, ¿no? El 57% de las trabajadoras del hogar no reciben ningún beneficio. Lo hemos estado escuchando aquí. Solo el 36% recibe licencia por enfermedad pagada. Los trabajadores informan que van a trabajar regularmente cuando están enfermos. Y solamente estoy haciendo eco a la mayoría de los comentarios que hemos escuchado. Elvia mencionó que ella es la organizadora de aproximada más de 90 trabajadoras del hogar. Si ustedes escucharan un poco esas historias tan desgarradoras de compañeras trabajadoras del hogar que limpian casas, que van como van a trabajar tan solo por poner un poco de comida a su casa, es desgarrador. Si tuviéramos beneficios portátiles, quizás no nos harían la vida maravillosa, verdad? Pero aliviarían un poco a todos esos problemas que las trabajadoras están pasando económicamente. Las buenas noticias es que el 87% de los empleadores apoya el tiempo pagado por enfermedad para los trabajadores del hogar. También escuchamos testimonios de algunos empleadores que estuvieron diciendo que están de acuerdo. Y el 69% apoya las vacaciones pagadas. Bravo por ellos, verdad? Necesitamos que se contacten con otros empleadores para poder estar ellos juntos también y nosotros poder tener la esperanza de que podemos recibir días de enfermedad pagados y vacaciones pagadas. Más de la mitad de los encuestados, porque hicimos una encuesta para poder sacar todos estos números, verdad? Más de la mitad de los encuestados de empleadores, que son el 58%, creen que la agencia y las entidades de contratación individual deberían de ser responsables. Entonces, yo voy a dejar a mi compañera Liz para que hable un poquito. Estaba un video, pero creo que ella lo va a hacer aquí en persona, para que dé un testimonio ella como empleadora. Ella tiene una nanny y una limpiadora de casas para trabajando para ella. Entonces, voy a dejar a Liz para que ella dé testimonio de la importancia de por qué tener días de enfermedad pagados. Liz.
Good morning. My name is Liz Hunter Keller and I am a member of the Domestic Workers Standards Board. But more importantly, I am an employer and I am here to voice my support for benefits and pay leave for domestic workers. Over the years, as a board member, I've heard from domestic workers who have no benefits at all. That means they go to work sick, which we know over the last year and a half is bad in a number of ways. They work in close quarters with their colleagues and the families that they work for, which means that the possibility of transmission is greatly increased. It also means that the domestic workers may take longer to get well or that something small could turn into something large and dangerous and costly. And it's not just sick leave. I've heard from workers who can't take paid time off to visit a sick family member or even attend a funeral. I believe employers like me would be willing and even happy to pay for benefits for their employees. As you've heard, we have results from surveys and interviews conducted by community organizations that show employers' support paid leave. I currently use an online platform to pay my nanny, which helps me manage my employer taxes, pay into her paid leave and social security. There are several of these nanny pay platforms on the market, which means there is a demand for a domestic worker pay system. Unfortunately, it's hard to find a way to pay into other domestic workers' benefits, such as housekeepers or gardeners. That means that PTO and benefits are left up to the employers to figure out. Housekeepers often work for multiple households and they need a way for each household to contribute a fair share of benefits. If we made paid leave mandatory for domestic workers and supported a portable benefits platform that would allow various households to pay into a central account, domestic workers could accrue paid time off, paid leave like the rest of our city's wage and salary workers. A single platform would make life easier for employers and drastically improve quality of life for domestic workers. Let's make sure domestic workers have the ability to take paid leave like the rest of us. Everyone should be afforded the right to take some time off without financial or physical hardship. Thank you Liz.
Turn it back.
Gracias Liz, gracias. Siguiente slides, por favor. Derecho a licencia pagada con goce de sueldo, okay? ¿Cómo un sistema portátil de beneficios sería exitoso, verdad? Aquí tenemos dos, cuatro, siete puntos, lo cual haría exitoso a este beneficio portátil, verdad? Aquí tenemos dos, cuatro, siete puntos, lo cual haría exitoso a este beneficio portátil, ¿verdad? El número uno, portabilidad. El derecho a la licencia remunerada debe ser transferible para ser coherente con las condiciones laborales reales de muchos trabajadores del hogar. Entonces, debe de tener una cuenta centralizada. Pasamos al siguiente. ¿Qué es un sistema de cuenta centralizada? Todos... Bueno, la mayoría de los que limpiamos casas, voy a hablar de los que limpiamos casas, tenemos diferentes empleadores, como lo mencionó Martita, ¿verdad? Martita decía que tiene seis empleadores. Entonces, ¿cómo podemos tener una cuenta centralizada donde todos los empleadores de Martita? Voy a ponerle Martita, te estoy usando de ejemplo, puedan poner los aportes a esa sola cuenta. Entonces, deberíamos de tener una cuenta centralizada para cada trabajador donde todos puedan, los empleadores de ese trabajador puedan poner su dinero en una sola cuenta. Y el número tres es quién lo administraría, ¿verdad? Necesitamos otra entidad aparte de la ciudad que pueda manejar esta cuenta centralizada para crear más confianza, para que las personas se puedan acercar más ahí. Entonces, necesitamos definitivamente una tercera parte para que puedan, un tiro cali para que puedan hacer esto, ¿verdad? Y cómo podemos enforzar. También tenemos que buscar una parte que sea enforzada y fuerte porque si no, no tiene poder, ¿verdad? Tiene que ser mandatorio porque si dejamos opción al empleador, probablemente pueda, probablemente no pueda, ¿verdad? Entonces, por eso debe de ser mandatorio. También necesitamos una cobertura universal para todos los trabajadores del hogar. El derecho a la licencia remunerada debe estar disponible para todos los trabajadores del hogar, ya sean empleados o contratistas independientes, a todos los que abarca lo que es la Carta de Derechos de la Ciudad de Seattle. Y también continuar colaborando con los trabajadores, ¿verdad? Que los trabajadores sean los principales, la voz de ellos, que sea lo principal en esta sección de los beneficios portátiles. Ellos van a ser los que nos den la pauta a nosotros para seguir trabajando en esto. Y sé que el liderazgo de ellos es tan importante y sigue siendo tan importante porque gracias a ellos hemos hecho estas encuestas y hemos sacado las necesidades de ellos. Y Teresa recordará las veces que, la concejal Teresa recordará las veces que estuvimos en las sesiones de escucha, lo fuerte que fueron las voces de estos trabajadores. Y queremos seguir trayendo esas voces aquí para que sea esto lideriado por ellos también. Pero por eso es tan importante también la última parte, seguir haciendo outreach y educación tanto para empleadores como para trabajadores. Porque si no trabajamos juntos, no vamos a poder llegar a la meta, ¿verdad? Tanto uno como otro nos juntamos. Y también quiero mencionar las organizaciones tan importantes en este papel que estamos jugando de los beneficios portátiles. Gracias. Yo le paso a Bailey la siguiente slide. Gracias por su tiempo.
Thank you, Sylvia. So this is our last slide of the presentation, touching on next steps. Continued engagement with stakeholders and board members throughout this 120-day response period and beyond is of huge importance to the board. We would like council staff to attend our monthly meetings to provide substantive status updates and apply our suggestions and feedback. Additionally, the Portable Benefits Subcommittee and the Domestic Workers Coalition expect regular updates and engagement from council staff specifically on portable benefits. A meeting about this recommendation should take place within the first 30 days of the response period. Overall, we expect that workers, community experts and board members are central to guiding the implementation process and that their expertise is prioritized as the voice of the workers. Our recommendation materials are continued with an appendix containing research conducted by the board and local stakeholders to illustrate the needs and priorities of real workers and hiring entities. We appreciate the trust that you have placed in us by creating this unprecedented advisory board in the first place. Please let us exercise our power to continue being hands-on in putting these recommendations into practice. We plan to continue to make recommendations to guide the expansion of domestic workers' rights. That concludes our presentation. And at this time, I'd like to invite questions and invite members of the coalition and the board to help answer them. Sylvia, would you like to speak?
Sí, no quería cerrar yo antes de las preguntas sin dejar de hacer eco solamente a varios comentarios que mencionaron las compañeras, ¿no? No queremos un piloto porque ya existe, lo mencionó varias veces también Liz, ¿verdad? Solamente queremos el mecanismo que nos ayude a tener días de enfermedad pagados porque sabemos que tenemos derechos a días de enfermedad pagado las trabajadoras del hogar, pero como tenemos varios empleadores y pocas horas, no existe ese mecanismo del cual nosotros podamos recibir esos beneficios. Solamente quería recalcar eso porque es lo que dijeron tanto en los comentarios publicos. Gracias. Ahora sí, lo siento, Bailey.
Okay, I'm gonna step in here. I want to give folks a chance to understand where we're at in the agenda. This is our first agenda item. We have two other agenda items. So our revised agenda timelines is allowing for 30 minutes, which should be more than necessary according to Ally for the next agenda item. We're gonna start that at 11:45. So we have about 15 minutes of questions and discussion right now. And then we will start the last agenda item at 12:15, which will give us 45 minutes for that so that we're ending by our one o'clock time. Okay, I'm seeing nods from council members. Great. Just wanted to make sure to orient us to the time here. And then also, as the last slide said, as folks know from the participation in the Domestic Workers Bill of Rights drafting and cosponsorship, thank you, council colleagues. You'll remember that we put in pretty strict language to require a response to the recommendations that were submitted. As the last slide shows, we're required to respond within, I think, a 90-day period. So that's September 15th, 2021, according to the slide. And that ensures that recommendations don't come forward and then just sit on a shelf. There needs to be actions and discussion and conversation about what's possible, if it's not possible, what is possible and alternatives proposed, so that it's really action-oriented. So a reminder on that. And then just in terms of process, colleagues, we really want to make sure that there is a transparent and open dialogue, both with members of the board here and members of the public. So we will be asking you to share your questions and thoughts, not only in today's presentation, but future committee meetings, for example, on July 9th. And we want to be able to have a letter crafted and discussed at our July 20th or August 3rd committee meeting. So all of this will be a very public discussion about responses to the recommendations. And today is really a chance for us to walk through those four high-level recommendations. Have some questions. And then there will be another three committee meetings over July and August where we'll have the chance to really vet and discuss the recommendations even more. So just want to make sure you all know what the process was going to look like so that we, as a collective council, will be drafting our response as required in a series of meetings coming up. Okay, let's turn it over to questions. And again, I want to thank Cutting Your Baragon for translation services. I know that's a ton of work, both for public comment and for the conversation here. And we have board members with us who popped onto screen. It's great to see all of you in addition to the co-chairs. Colleagues, questions? Okay, I will pop in one question. Hi, good to see so many faces. I do want, oh my gosh, it's like a reunion coming on screen here. If we were in person, this would be very exciting to see all of you one day again. Just for the viewing public, I want to make sure that folks know when we were talking about those who are currently considered as exempt from this, there is information on the slide labeled number three, which is policy changes to improve. Just as a quick reminder, this was also done in coordination with the large coalition working on the Domestic Worker Standards Bill of Rights, where at the time there was some concern about having duplicate standards for Medicaid reimbursable long-term care providers. And it sounds like some of the conversation has changed around that. And so that is part of the recommendation. But I just want to make sure that folks know why they are originally excluded and the sort of evolution of the thought around that. So people might just wonder, well, why were they excluded in the first place? I think that there was some lessons learned in the last few years as we've implemented. And now the recommendation is to include some of those Medicaid reimbursable workers. Additional questions? Okay, well, we do have a few more minutes. Are there any additional comments that board members would like to pop in and chime in on? Since we can see your faces, I'm happy to hear any additional context you might like to provide.
I just want to say that there has been an incredible amount of work to try to engage. This is Andrea Krenzler. An incredible amount of work to engage domestic workers. And we are desperately trying to get more workers at the table. I'm really proud to say that as I move, transition off of this board, that my role will be replaced, has been replaced with a worker. But we have intentionally tried to reach out and to engage and to be thoughtful. And we really have appreciated your leadership and we appreciate the directive written in the ordinance. And we are asking you to do lots of big different things, but we don't want you to be overwhelmed by the ask. We are willing to be here in solidarity with you to do the hard work. And we just want to say thank you so very much. And Councilmember Gonzalez, my thoughts and prayers are with you and your family. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Andrea. And I want to take this opportunity to say thank you for your service on the board as well. I know we just recently voted to appoint your replacement, but just really appreciate you helping to get this entity off the ground. And we know that you will still be involved in various ways. Yes, Veronica.
Good morning, everybody. My name is Veronica. I'm with the Coalition of Domestic Workers and also Casa Latina for sure. And I just wanted to reiterate that, I mean, really what we realize, and especially speaking about portable benefits, that as you've heard all the public comments, all the domestic workers sharing their testimonies, as well as what we've seen through the pandemic, right? It is very highly needed to have support, to have protection, especially paid time off or especially paid sick days. So I wanted to reiterate that it is something, the portable benefit request is not, it's already, I mean, it's there and it's so needed. So it's so needed and it's possible. We've seen it with ALIA. And I want to kind of give a little bit of information about ALIA for those who are not so much knowledgeable there. It's like ALIA is a platform that is gathering workers and employers to pay in a worker's account. It is a platform that was designed and created by the National Domestic Workers Alliance Lab. So it has been in existence for the last at least two or three years. And Rosio, who is from the National Domestic Workers Alliance, is here and can add some to it. So there are different mechanisms in existence. But ALIA worked to some degree in terms of usability. What we heard from all the, we had about 80, if not more, domestic workers at Casa Latina who use it. However, only half of their employers opted in. So if it's just an option, it doesn't work. ALIA could be that mechanism, but it needs to be mandated. So that's why it's very important to have something, to have a mandated policy on that so that it's not an option from the employers to say yes or no. The last thing is like, however, we've seen that a lot of employers are willing to pay for it. They've been mentioning, 87% say they should be paid. We are willing to pay portable benefits. And because they've seen it through the pandemic and because they rely on all those domestic workers who are doing the work that know that is needed for all the other workers to go out and work. And as we're coming back to hopefully some kind of normalcy, that's going to be even more and more needed. But we shouldn't forget what the domestic workers went through through the pandemic. That's when it was so visible that now we can do something and we should do something. In Seattle, with especially the city council, has been so much always in the forefront of all the new legislation, the 50 minimum wage and all that, that we want to be part of that group of in the front. And we have other cities who are also working on that, which could be also something that we can learn from. We have Philly, Philadelphia, we have San Francisco, that we can all learn from and work for on behalf and for the benefit of all domestic workers, not just in Seattle, but hopefully in Washington and in the whole nation. So thank you for listening to all those domestic workers and I know you're gonna do the right thing. But let's do it all together, especially with the workers. Thank you.
Great, thank you. I did have a question as it relates to the ALIA platform. And really appreciate the time. I think it was 2019 that I had the chance to go to New York and meet with folks at the Domestic Workers Alliance. And we talked a lot about ALIA, so it's definitely been around for a while. And I know that it's been a helpful tool for many domestic workers. In Philadelphia, I believe you said that they mandated portable benefits. Are they using an ALIA platform? How did they, what vehicle did they use to get those benefits out to folks?
My name is Rosio Avila and I am with the National Domestic Workers Alliance. I will try to answer your question, Ms. Mokka. So the ordinance in Philadelphia has been passed and we are in the regulatory phase of it. The platform itself is being designed by the engineers and the NDWA labs. ALIA, as you may have learned and as raised by Veronica and others, is the current system. But what will be unfolded in Philadelphia and hopefully in San Francisco is going to be something different because it's going to be based on the ordinance and the specific rule pertaining to how you accrue hours. And it's going to be a different, yeah, a different application. But the concept, which really stems and originated from the ALIA pilot that you all are familiar, is the spirit of what will be, you know, folded out in Philadelphia and hopefully in San Francisco soon.
Thank you. That helps. And then maybe a follow-up to that is, do you know when the Philly and San Francisco platforms will be available for employers and hiring entities and domestic workers? And then the second part of that question perhaps is for OLS. I saw our friend Jasmine on the line here. Thank you, Jasmine. As part of the ordinance, we had requested a draft contract or a model contract that could be used. Does the model contract that we envision go beyond explaining the rights to a guaranteed X amount of pay? So there's something in paper showing how much a domestic worker will earn. Does it also talk about how they can potentially accrue or earn paid time off or sick leave as part of that model contract if a hiring entity at this point chooses to do so, recognizing they should be, since we put it in the law, especially as El Duena mentioned, it's part of the required PTO, I'm sorry, paid breaks or at least part of the contract that we envision. Do we also envision PTO being listed in the draft contract?
So the domestic workers. Hi, everyone. My name is Jasmine Marwaha, policy analyst with the Office of Labor Standards. The Domestic Workers Ordinance right now says that OLS shall make available a model notice of rights, which is slightly different than a model contract. So the notice of rights that we've provided as a sample just lists the rights that are entitled, that domestic workers are entitled to from the Domestic Workers Ordinance. So it does not make reference to the option of portable benefits.
That's right. I forgot that. So we had asked also the Domestic Workers Standards Board to come up with potential model contracting, which is that right?
That was partly, that was a possible topic of discussion that was listed in the ordinance, but it wasn't necessarily a directive to the board. I do know that some community partners that are funded by OLS have, do have some model contracts. And I know that the National Domestic Workers Alliance also has model contracts available. So those resources do exist in community, but they're not necessarily from OLS.
And just... No, I just wanted to clarify that the ordinance in Philadelphia mandates written agreements and it will intersect with the notice of rights. And once the portable benefits system is rolled out, and to answer your question, we expect it to be rolled out by the end of the year. San Francisco, it's not law yet. We are going to introduce the ordinance in mid-June or the end of June. So there's no ordinance yet in San Francisco, but we're getting close to a proposal that will be vetted by the Board of Supervisors.
Wonderful. I see Bailey.
Yeah, thank you. So one of the things I wanted to touch on regarding the model contract is that that...
Yeah, thank you. So one of the things I wanted to touch on regarding the model contract is that that was a point of discussion in the board, and I think, correct me if I'm wrong, fellow colleagues, but I think that there, we needed more discussion, and we needed more time to engage more workers to make sure that it was something that actually worked for them and didn't create barriers to that situation, because, you know, contracts and, and formal agreements can be, can induce, you know, kind of fear and, and kind of emotional barriers to that situation. So we kind of determined over time that it needed more discussion and needed more worker engagement to see if that was going to go forward.
Thank you for that update. Councilmember Herbl, did you have something?
Oh, just a question for Jasmine on what the current funding is, that it's available for outreach and if it's broken out by type of outreach. And my notes say that so far, OLS has received fifteen worker inquiries resulting in one investigation. Are these outcomes associated with the, the current laws? Is this part of the call for, for more outreach resources that the Domestic Workers Board would, would sort of take on? I just, I'm, I, I want to understand more about the thinking. I, I, I see fifteen worker inquiries and one investigation, and if, if that, those numbers are, are correct, then that would lead me to believe, not that I, I want to believe that there are a lot of violations in the community, but it would lead me to believe that, that more information about workers' rights is, is important. But I'm just, I'm just trying to see whether or not we are considering those, those metrics as part of the argument for why we need more resources. And again, just wanting to understand what the current budget is for outreach.
So I can speak a little bit to the current budget, and then I'll let the board advocate for why they want more resources since OLS has not taken a formal position on the recommendations yet. But, and we can also get, we can also circle back and have something in writing for you in terms of the breakdown of the outreach budget. You know, currently, OLS, as you may know, has a Community Outreach and Education Fund, as well as a Business Outreach and Education Fund. And the, the DWO is, is among the list of labor standards that community organizations do outreach for. But it's folded into, it's not necessarily specific to that ordinance. It's folded into our suite of sixteen labor standards. And, and then there's also about thirty-five thousand that OLS receives. That is for DW, it's both for DWO outreach, but also for a DWSB costs, which include costs of interpretation and translation and other sort of administrative costs. So I don't have the breakdown of how much of that thirty-five K goes to outreach versus board administration, but that, that's the pot. And then, as you may recall, council allocated an additional fifty thousand dollars of one-time funding this year to help sort of jumpstart the implementation of the recommendations. And part of the, part of the, our response and our evaluation over the next couple of weeks in months is going to be, you know, with, in collaboration with the board, kind of like, what, what can be done with that fifty thousand? What will need additional resources and kind of just doing a prioritization exercise with them?
Any closing comments in response to the question or overall?
Leave Doris and Emily both have their hands up.
Thank you. I just wanted to quickly comment that it's the, a little bit on the contract side. As Bailey mentioned, yes, there is a lot of fear from many workers on, you know, creating a contract that they might not feel comfortable with. But I think a very well already created vehicle to make sure this happens is through the notice of rights. And I think it would be a great idea, like Councilmember Mosqueda mentioned to add, if possible, even the, the accrual system for workers in that notice of right, the rights. The only issue that I see and many other workers confront towards this is that it's not mandatory. This notice of right is not mandatory to, to offer to the employers. I think that will be a great push for this work that we're already doing to be able to enforce the law that we already have and push for more people to really follow the law. Unfortunately, a lot of workers feel intimidated when talking to employers. A lot of workers don't have the capacity or the, you know, confidence to talk about their rights to workers. So it is, it, it is a matter of that relationship that they have to develop with them, and they have to learn to be employers. So I think one great opportunity for us is through the, through the, the already created notice of rights, making it mandatory, starting from that, so that we can keep enforcing this, that the way it was meant to be from the get-go. I appreciate you for the language, just as you're doing today. I decided to speak in English just to make my points across. But I really appreciate, appreciate the, 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 the time and, and capacity that you're putting into making this available for our workers. So I appreciate a lot of that, and I, I hope you keep, you keep continuing doing this. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Doris. And Emily to close us out.
Okay, really quickly, I won't keep you long. I want to thank you, thank everybody here for all the work that you're doing, and I'm just going to be quick around advocating resources for investing.
And just shout a little, Emily.
Okay, just really investing and bringing people to the table, the, the workers, is what I kind of have a concern about. And I wanted to point out that the past two years of our board service, that three of the people who left were workers' voices. And I believe, not speaking to their personal situations, but I believe that it was different the reasons that, that the employer representation left. It was more of, they had to make the decision, as Etelina mentioned, between going to the board meetings or going to work. And I think that we really need to make an effort to find a way to bring those people to the table for more equitable representation.
Excellent. Rosio, I saw you come off mute. Any last comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify that the Philadelphia bill is, is, is law, and we're working on the design and unfolding the platform. It is a permanent mandate, and the San Francisco bill that I'm working on will also be permanent. And the Board of Supervisors has unanimously in support of it.
Excellent. Great. Well, I want to thank all of you for your time. Dana, did you have one more thing?
I just wanted to say I would love the time to respond. I know I can't do it now, but to the question that Councilmember raised about outreach and why it's been so difficult, especially in regard to outreach to employers. So as a staff person for Hand in Hand in Philadelphia, in, sorry, in Seattle, and who's very much responsible for doing a lot of that outreach, I would love to talk about why we do need that outreach funding.
Well, that would be very welcome, and I saw a lot of heads nodding. If there's any additional context that you want to provide, wonderful. We'll take letters. We will take examples as we consider our response here. And then just to clarify for members of the public, while the notice of rights might not have a mandatory PTO and sick leave in it, which is the topic of discussion today, I want to remind folks, it is mandatory that workers, domestic workers, get rest and meal breaks according to the law. That is mandatory. And at least the minimum wage, which is also mandatory, obviously above that. And a lot more conversations to come. Bailey, last comment.
Yeah, very quickly, I just want to get a commitment from council members in this room right now to engage with us on a monthly basis going forward for this one hundred and twenty day period. I know it's going to be a busy time, but we do want to make sure that the, that the response isn't, you know, one hundred and nineteen days to the end of the period. So can I get a commitment from council members and staff here to continue to engage with us on a monthly basis for the rest of this response period?
Great. I think you saw some thumbs up, and I don't think anybody's been shy about engaging. I just already mentioned that there's going to be three more committee meetings on this as well. So I saw thumbs up from staff. Wonderful. Okay, we're going to close this out. I want to thank all of you, and especially Carinio Baragon. Hearts back to you. Thank you so much for your time today, and we're going to move on to item number two. Thanks for everybody.
Thank you.
Agenda item number two, the American Rescue Plan Act, Direct Aid for briefing and discussion.
Ali, I want to thank you for your patience today. I know that you said you have a short presentation, and the time I allotted for you continued to shrink, but I think we still have more than the twenty minutes than you said you needed. So please go ahead and walk us through item number two here. I know you have some good news, bad news situations from the federal relief dollars that we just learned more about last Monday.
Thank you, councilmembers. I'm Ali Puchia, your Council Central staff, and as Chair Mosqueda described, I will try to keep my presentation brief, but I'm happy, and I'm happy to follow up with any of you one-on-one, and we will also be back in committee discussing this topic in a couple of weeks. So today I will update the committee on the guidance issued by the Department of the Treasury on May tenth regarding the city's allocation of coronavirus local fiscal recovery funds. That's the flexible direct aid to cities and, and the eligible uses. Very briefly discuss county and state spending in areas that overlap or complement spending priorities identified in Resolution three one nine 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 by the council, and then outline next steps for the committee's consideration of use of these funds. So the guidance issued on May tenth provided more detailed allocation information for the CLFR, CLFR funds, that the amount allocated to the city of Seattle came in about seven million dollars below previous estimates that have been discussed in this committee. So that is the bad news that Chair Mosqueda referred to. So for 2021, the committee will be considering an appropriation bill that would authorize spending the first half of those dollars, so about a hundred and sixteen million dollars, as well as considering use of some targeted aid for specific purposes that I'll highlight briefly at the end of the presentation. The guidance issued on May tenth also included an interim, interim final rule that provides more detailed guidance on the eligible, eligible uses of the direct aid to cities. These funds provide flexibility for the city to address the needs of our community, including support for households, small businesses, impacted industries, essential workers, and the communities hardest hit by the crisis. The funds can also be used to make necessary investments in water, sewer, and broadband. So this is consistent with the initial guidance or what we assumed based on what the language that was in the American Rescue Plan Act. There is a lot of information in the detailed rule. Today I'm just highlighting a few pieces related to guidance around investments that address the negative impacts of the pandemic. The guidance describes use of the funds to provide assistance to workers and families, including direct cash assistance, supporting job training as well as aid to households facing food, housing, or other financial insecurity. Again, either through direct financial assistance or through services and programs that support workers and families. Also allows for supporting small businesses, including providing loans, grants, or in-kind assistance and counseling programs to support small businesses, their nonprofit organizations to rebound from the downturn, and then investments that will read, that will speed the recovery of the tourism, travel, and hospitality sectors, as well as rebuilding the public sector. Councilmember Herbl.
My apologies. So quickly, the first bullet, as it relates to housing insecurity, that included homelessness. And the third bullet calls out specific sectors for recovery investments. Does the hospitality or tourism, does that include the arts and entertainment sector?
Councilmember Herbl, to the, to the first question related to providing homeless services, the guidance is a little bit unclear in that area, so we are still digging into that, but it is really focused on providing services and resources to help get people into housing. So we are still sorting out exactly all of the specific eligible uses as the city's strategies to support our neighbors experiencing homelessness are, are fairly broad, and also includes specific language about supporting certain types of public health responses for both the general public as well as people experiencing homelessness. So there is more to come there, but I'll just also note there's also twelve point two million dollars from, of home funds that are specifically focused on supporting people experiencing homelessness. And then in terms of the, the language around the tourism, travel, and hospitality sectors, I haven't read all of the details on that piece, but it is, it is fairly broad. And I think that the arts and entertainment industry could be considered as part of that, as well as supporting small, small businesses. So I think there is some flexibility there, but I will follow up with more, more information.
Thanks, Hallie.
Let's see here. So the guidance focuses, sorry. The guidance focuses on providing support to communities and families most impacted by the crisis. This supports the principles the council adopted in Resolution three one nine 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 that express council's intent to prioritize use of these funds to support individuals and families who have been disproportionately impacted by COVID-19, and to really build on the type of investments that were funded in the Jump Start COVID Relief Plan in 2020 and in 2021.
Hallie, just want to orient myself to that, the slides with the bifurcated screen. In a previous presentation, you had done what was in our resolution versus what the guidance said. Is that also how these are oriented?
No, this was just actually a space saver on this particular slide to just separate out the language in the guidance, funds to serve the hardest hit, and then it provides some specific language about what the guidance says about how we identify the communities that are hardest hit. So the, the right portion of the slide is sort of describing what the intent is around how we might define those populations. But again, there's some very specific language about serving households or families who live in qualified census tracts or supporting services or businesses within those qualified service census tracts, but it also provides language to support other populations, households, or geographies that have been disproportionately impacted by the pandemic. So we have not yet, but we'll go through the exercise, for example, of looking at what is identified as a qualified census tract in Seattle, as well as the work the city has done, for example, to identify areas of the city that are at high risk of displacement and/or do not have good access to, to opportunity.
Great. Thank you very much.
So this slide highlights the information that the guidance that identifies categories of spending that are not eligible for use of the CLFR funds. I'll just note here that for the most part, the priorities identified in council's resolution do appear to be eligible uses of the funds. The one piece I'd point out is in, that was included in the resolution is investments in critical transportation infrastructure that would not be eligible unless it is needed to respond to pandemic-related public health needs or is an investment that would have been funded otherwise but for reductions to the Department of Transportation's budget due to revenue, reduced revenues in 2021. So this slide, I just list the nine categories to prioritize the use of federal funds identified in council's resolution and, and highlight some of the proposed, so the next, excuse me, the next slide, slide seven through eleven, highlight proposed appropriations of the county and the state's adopted operation or capital budget that overlap with or complement these priorities. I'll just note that this is a highlight of, of many of the proposed investments. It's not comprehensive, and the county is still deliberating on their proposal, and so some of these numbers may change as they finalize their decisions. So I'm not going to spend a lot of time going through the details on the slides, but if council members have questions about any of the information, I'm happy to talk offline and bring along with me other analysts who may have more of the details on some of these specific investment areas. Just to orient you to the slides themselves, what this does is it, the, the topics in bold, like vaccines and testing, that's an identified spending category in council's resolution. And then underneath that, it highlights some of the areas, in this case at the county, that supports those priorities. So this can be used moving forward. So this can be used moving forward as as the committee considers the appropriations bill in areas where there may be sufficient resources provided by the state or the county and where there are opportunities to complement or be a partner with the county in supporting certain services or programs. And this is again, consistent with the principles laid out in the resolution where the council highlighted as a priority leveraging shared resources to ensure that the city's response is addressing gaps in service and to expand the city's financial partnership with the county to support county programs and services that benefits workers, nonprofits, and small businesses throughout Seattle.
Well said, Ally. I was just going to chime in to say this is really an important effort for us to look at how we can be aligned in certain investment areas, bring programs and and services to scale or identify where the county is stepping in. And perhaps that means that the city is able to take resources into another category. So thank you for orienting us to this slide. Again, bold is where we have language that replicates what's in our priorities from the resolution. And the bullets are in King County's draft proposal still to be discussed, as you see in the note with the asterisks at the bottom. Vice Chair Herbold, did you have a comment?
Yes, the question, do we have a level of detail that would let us know whether or not any of the investments under housing homelessness and housing services include acquisition of buildings for sheltering?
I believe we do have that level of detail, but I don't have it right in front of me. So you're specifically talking about the county's proposed.
Correct.
Proposed spending. Yeah, I can follow follow up with that information. We do have more details and their materials are available online. So we can dig in more and check in with county staff. As well. And then I know there's been also recent announcement with some of the funds the city is using from a different source. Or excuse me, the county is using from a different source to support acquisition of like hotels, for example, those executive Constantine recently announced.
But that is not from this source of funds.
That is not included in this this list, I believe. Okay, the the 50 million, I just need to double check because the county's bill is incorporating not just the the direct aid to counties. It is also using other funding sources such as their their reserves and that. I think a couple of other resources from the county.
Thank you.
So this slide is just a continuation of the same, but it's focusing on a couple of other categories. I'm not going to dive in to the details here, but I would say the investments are aligned with many of the principles and priorities outlined in council's resolution, for example, supporting apprenticeship and job training programs, prioritizing investments in BIPOC businesses and economic resiliency and that that sort of thing. And then similarly, the state budget that the council had a more detailed briefing on from our colleagues in OIR on Monday at council briefing, so I won't spend much time here, but this is some sampling of some of the investments that are included in the state's recently adopted budget.
Just clarification on that, though, Ally. These are statewide numbers, correct? This is not.
That is, that is correct. And some of this may flow to the city, but most of it will throw flow through other agencies and organizations where that where like businesses or renters or landlords will have access to those funds.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so skip, oh, go ahead.
Sure. Oh, hi, Councilmember Morales. I meant to say welcome to you. For the record, Councilmember Morales has been with us since public testimony and has been a regular participant in finance and housing, even when not a alternate technically. So appreciate you being here with us, Councilmember Morales. Thanks for joining in. Please go ahead.
Thank you. Well, I just have, going back to the sort of recovery and you know, sort of equitable investments, I am curious if there's any specific funding item that does talk about, for example, land acquisition, land acquisition, you know, how we would support microbusiness development, access to capital for microbusinesses, that sort of thing. Either in the the King County priorities that you were talking about, Ally, or in how that's reflected in the other priorities that we've listed.
So the the language in the guidance from the the Treasury is primarily focused on addressing the economic impacts of businesses or workers that were impacted. So there isn't so far that I've come across very specific language, although it may be in there. The document is about 150 pages. So we will, we will double check. There is very clear language about acquisition to support investments in affordable housing and supporting businesses through helping sort of, you know, secure long-term leases and addressing background in that that type of thing. But specific to microbusinesses or sort of land acquisition as a more general principle for, you know, long-term community wealth building, that type of thing, I will need to get back to you about.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for asking that question, Councilmember Morales. That's a big priority for a number of us, I think, as well. Land acquisition and equitable development capacity building is something that we've heard a lot about during public testimony. So looking forward to hearing more about that and how that can weave into our priorities along the lines of the new guidance that we just got. All right, next steps.
Okay, next step. So the the plan is to introduce an appropriation bill on June 1st that will include authorizing spending of the first tranche, $116 million of CLFR funds as well as $12.2 million of ARPA Home Investment Partnership Funds. Other targeted aid the city has or will receive may also be included in that bill if funding awards are known or may come quickly on the heels of making a decision on that bill. That includes the additional rental assistance the city is anticipating of about $28 million as well as specific allocations from the Older Americans Act that will be used to support services and programs to support seniors. So on June 4th, that the committee will discuss the introduced legislation and will begin to identify potential amendments or where there needs to be more detailed information provided for the committee's consideration. And then at the Finance and Housing Committee, the second committee in June, the there will be a discussion and possible vote on amendments and the the bill or potentially bills. There may be, for technical reasons, a need to have more than one bill to consider these investments, but we're still working out those those details. And that was all I had for prepared presentation. I'm happy to address additional questions.
Before we get to questions, I want to say thank you, Ally. Thank you for spearheading this conversation. I know you and Sajia Purith, Chief of Staff in my office, Cody, writer in the Council President's office, have been in many conversations, and I think the Council President for her leadership on this as well as folks in the CDO. We have been actively working on compiling the various notes from council members, discussions in these committees, priorities that you all have brought up, and items that we've heard from public testimony and are now in the process, as you can tell, of aligning those with what is possible in the guidance that we received. Obviously, very happy to hear about potential additional fund sources to align with this proposal as we seek to get as many dollars out the door as possible. But I want to thank folks for all of your work on this as a collective. The council has been actively engaged in putting priorities forward in these meetings and the the public as well. So lots of work is going into trying to see how fast we can get out this 116-plus million dollars and recognizing this is just tranche one with much more relief still needed in our budget and tranche two. Vice Chair Herbold, please go ahead.
Just wanting to understand a little bit more, given the timeline that is being proposed, how we will find out more about the King.
I think Councilmember Herbold may be frozen, but I think I got the the general intent of her question around when we will find out more about King County. So the I believe that that bill is before their their committee.
There are, there are childcare investments as as well. I'm I'm interested in a proposal for childcare work.
Councilmember Herbold, your video in audio is cutting out if you can hear me. But I believe we're catching what you are interested in specifically in the childcare piece as well, given the 6 million that's noted in this slide. Ally, I'll turn it over to you and Councilmember Herbold. If you can hear me, apologies for speaking over you. We cannot hear you.
Thank you, Chair Mascheta, Councilmember Herbold. So the county, it is in committee. Their their appropriation bill has been introduced. I don't have the number in front of me, but I can distribute a link and it is being discussed in committee this week. And I believe they are in, at least the the plan is that council, that the county will act on their appropriation bill. By the end of the month, it was the last update I had had. So it will be before this committee is being asked to make a decision on appropriations bill. And so we'll continue to track that and seek additional details that can help inform your decisions about where to complement some of those those investments.
Sorry about that, Councilmember Herbold, that you're cutting out a little bit, but I think, did you, were you able to hear Ally's answer?
I got, I got the gist. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Great question. I'm not seeing any additional questions. Okay, and as a reminder for folks, we will, as Ally mentioned, have this probably be our last meeting without a actual draft bill in front of you. At the next meeting, we will be able to have the American Rescue Plan appropriations legislation in front of us for discussion. We know that this federal guidance has been helpful and also, you know, also discouraging that we got 7 million less total than we thought we would receive. So trying to crunch those numbers and really reflect some of the priorities that we've continued to hear about has been a lot of work. So thanks again to the entire team who's been working on this. And we will, because of the holiday, will not be introduced on the 31st of May and instead on the 1st of June, as Ally noted. And we will then have a meeting in our Finance and Housing Committee meeting. Note that it is on a Friday. We don't usually meet on Fridays, but because of the holiday, we are moved from Tuesday to Friday. So at our June 4th meeting, we'll really be devoted to walking through that draft proposal. And then folks know that we do have a hold on your calendar, not only on the 15th, which is our normal meeting day, but also on the 16th, in case we need two meetings as we did in this, as we did previously as well, to make sure that we could accommodate discussions. And we will make sure to keep you updated as we get closer to those dates for those times. But if you could graciously hold those two dates, that would be appreciated. Other questions? Hearing none. Ally, thanks again for walking us through. And guess what? It's 12:15. We're on time for our new aligned agenda. Thanks so much, colleagues. Let's move on to item number three. Madam, could you please read item three into the record?
Agenda item number three, Council Bill 120069, an ordinance relating to independent contractors in Seattle establishing labor standards requirements for independent contractors working in Seattle for briefing and discussion.
Thank you very much. And Karina Bull from Central Staff is with us. Our leader and expert on labor standards has provided us with a memo and a presentation. Councilmember Herbold, as the prime sponsor on this, who's leading up the charge, do you have any opening comments that you'd like to share?
Both in the interest of time and because my internet is unstable, I'm going to just hand it over to Karina, thank her for her work. Continuing conversation. Last meeting was on May, May 4th. So work in progress. And we're going to be, I think, through Karina's presentation, keying up how the legislation has changed and some additional amendments for consideration. No, no plan to vote today. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. I am Karina Bull with Central Staff. And per Councilmember Herbold's introduction, I have a presentation that will highlight the introduced legislation and focus on some changes from the draft that was discussed on May 4. And also, as Councilmember Herbold said, bring some issues to the council's attention for consideration. So to begin, the introduced legislation would require commercial hiring entities, that's the the legal term for business in this legislation, to provide independent contractors with pre-contract disclosures, timely payment and payment disclosures for services valued at $600 or more. These requirements would come effective on March 1st of next year, and they would be implemented by the Office of Labor Standards. The policy changes begin with hiring entity coverage. This legislation would solely be limited to covering commercial hiring entities. At the last meeting on May 4, it was discussed that any hiring entity of a domestic worker would be removed, and that is reflected in this introduced legislation. Next, there is a new requirement to address the the needs of small businesses that may have a difficult time administering the requirements of this legislation, that meaning the disclosures for intermittent contracts or smaller contracts. So in light of that, there is a new requirement for a value of services. And this legislation would only cover independent contractor services with a proposed actual or expected compensation value of $600 or more in the calendar year. Next, transportation network companies would still be required to provide their drivers with timely payment, but they would not be required to provide pre-contract or payment disclosures. They, of course, would still be required to comply with the TNC Minimum Compensation Ordinance that was passed last year and went into effect in January. That law requires payment of a minimum compensation and does require payment disclosures. It does not require something akin to a pre-contract disclosure or that sort of thing. But so this this law would recognize that discussions were already had with the TNC companies and drivers for their needs. And so this legislation would only focus on the timely payment and the notice of rights as well. Next, a presumptive contract. At our last, at the last meeting, there was discussion about how the draft legislation would have a rebuttable presumption of a contract in the enforcement context, which would mean that if a hiring entity had not provided a pre-contract disclosure or had a pre-contract disclosure and did not honor it, if there was a payment claim, whether it be in court or the Office of Labor Standards, there would be an automatic presumption that the pre-contract disclosure had turned into a contract when the contractor began work or in the absence of that pre-contract disclosure that the independent contractors' claims for payment were true. So in the introduced legislation, that that presumptive contract now begins at the, for any, any services that are provided. That presumptive contract just happens immediately when the contractor begins agreed-upon work for the hiring entity. It doesn't wait necessarily until there is a payment claim, although it is likely to come up in the context of a payment claim. There is still the rebuttable presumption in the enforcement context for situations where a an independent contractor was not given a pre-contract disclosure. At last, model notices, those are required for any hiring entity to provide English and in the independent contractor's primary language. The Office of Labor Standards is required to create and distribute those model notices and including those translations by a specific date, which is the date that this law would go into effect on March 1st, 2022, so that all businesses and independent contractors would be ready to go with the information that they need for this law to be successful. Just a couple of issues for the council to consider. One is government is coverage of government entities. The law is silent on whether these requirements would apply to government entities. So it's something that the council may want to consider about whether the city of Seattle should be explicitly including included as a hiring entity. If the law is silent, it would be implicitly included, but there could be value to declaring that the city of Seattle is covered. And then also, to what extent the city of Seattle is covered? For example, the legislation would need to make it clear that coverage may only apply to situations when the city is acting as a commercial hiring entity. And there would be, there would need to be more research on what situations that would apply to. It could be the public utilities or city light. Those might be the only situations. There might be other ones. Another option for council to consider is coverage for any contract that the city of Seattle enters into. So that would be for childcare. It could be for mediation services. There are, of course, a plethora of different kind of contracts that the city of Seattle enters into. Another option is to explicitly exclude the city of Seattle from hiring entity coverage. Item number C is to exclude other governments. Item number C is to exclude other government entities from coverage. That could include King County, local government, federal government, a combination of any of those options, or make no changes to the legislation. And the end result would be that the city of Seattle is covered as a commercial hiring entity. It just wouldn't be explicitly announced. Are there any questions about that before I go on? Hearing none. I'll move on. Oh, yeah, go ahead.
If you could reacquaint us with the definition, as is currently drafted, for a commercial hiring entity?
Yes, I will. I will turn to that in my copy of the legislation. As I said earlier, it's, it's essentially, essentially the, the legal term for a business. And what the legislation says is that it is an entity that is regularly engaged in business or commercial activity, which regularly engaged in business or commercial activity is if the entity owns or operates any trade, occupation, or business, including a not-for-profit business or holds itself out as engaging in any trade, occupation, or business.
Okay. And so the question here is whether or not, for clarity's sake, we need to explicitly define whether or not the city of Seattle is considered a commercial hiring entity?
I think there's a couple of different ways that the legislation could, could go about it. One could be that the city could be announced as covered. The law would cover commercial hiring entity or the city. Or it could be the, law covers commercial hiring entities and the city, you know, to the extent that it engages in commercial hiring entity functions or operations. Or the city could be added to the definition of a commercial hiring entity. So there are a number of different ways that it could be accomplished.
Thank you.
Other questions? The next issue is regarding value of services. As I mentioned earlier, the legislation would cover situations where a contractor is hired to provide services that are valued at $600 or more in a calendar year. The reason why this specific amount was selected is because the Internal Revenue Service already requires businesses to report on a 1099 NEC form, the amount of non-employee compensation that is paid to workers of $600 or more. So that's a nice alignment. It, it aligns with the type of reporting that businesses are already required to do. Now, as time marches on, $600 will be worth a different amount in the future. And so council may want to consider, rather than changing the legislation or letting it become stagnant or less applicable in the future, addressing what happens to $600 now. Couple of different options for that is that there could be language stating that that $600 will be changed to, to reflect any change in the IRS reporting requirements for non-employee compensation. And another option is that the $600 could be changed to reflect the rate of inflation. And then, of course, another option is not to make a change. For either A or B, there also could be a requirement that the Office of Labor Standards would need to determine the amount and then file it with the city clerk, and also make sure to do some outreach and announcements so that both independent contractors and businesses are aware of this change in the value of services. Yes, Councilmember Herbald?
Um, and just clarify, A and B are two different approaches of adjusting the value of services, correct?
Yes, they are.
Thank you.
Just to provide some background, in the legislation, as is typical with any labor standards, the amounts of civil penalties and fines are adjusted each year to reflect the rate of inflation. Of course, in the minimum compensation law, the minimum compensation is adjusted every year. So there is a standard practice of adjusting amounts to reflect the rate of inflation. If that is something that council members are interested in, for this law, it could be applied to the $600. The piece to think about is that it might not align with that IRS reporting requirement. And last, the financial impact on the city in regards to the cost for Office of Labor Standards to implement this law is something that council might want to consider. The council has asked OLS their estimate of what it would cost to implement this legislation, and their initial estimate is up to $684,000. That's $60,000 in one-time funds and then $624,000 in ongoing funds. And this would be for three positions, a senior investigator, paralegal, engagement specialist that would conduct outreach. This amount would cover administrative expenses to onboard those positions, would pay for the creation of model notices, court navigation documents. There is a, a piece of the legislation in the enforcement section that establishes two new types of enforcement mechanisms for Office of Labor Standards. A complaint procedure, which is a non-adversarial exchange of documents that OLS would facilitate, and also a court navigation procedure where OLS would be providing outreach on how to access the court for independent contractors. So both of those procedures and mechanisms were designed to reduce the workload on Office of Labor Standards, but to get them running, it could take some extra work on their part. Next, funding for outreach and role making. Yes, Councilmember Herbald?
I just want to note here that it appears to me that, you know, we just, we just heard from the work, Domestic Worker Standards Board and OLS about how the lack of funding for, for outreach has, has brought them back to us to, to seek additional funding. So, you know, and I, I think the number that we heard was $35,000 for, for outreach for that bill. So I recognize that there is a, a need. This number makes me feel like there's a sort of a fundamental misunderstanding about what our expectations are around enforcement for, for this, for this legislation. And it's not, it's not, it's not clear to me how much of these ongoing annual costs are associated with, with enforcement. But I, I think we, we need to have a, a bit of a conversation with OLS because the, I think the enforcement expectations are really that this is, this is a law that is intended to empower workers to assert their rights without relying on OLS to enforce the law. And so I'm just sort of flagging, flagging that in, in recognition of this proposed price tag for ongoing annual costs. And I'm interested in trying to figure out, given the effective date and the work that actually needs to be done before the effective date of the legislation and next year's budget process, whether or not we can sequence addressing the needs of OLS in a way that corresponds to sort of our expectations for rolling out the ordinance.
Yeah, certainly would be helpful to hear from Office of Labor Standards, whether in a committee meeting or offline as well, compare this legislation to other laws that have been recently passed that have been funded and then have not been funded. My notes remind me that Office of Labor Standards received about $276,000 to implement the Domestic Worker Ordinance for two positions and about $300,000 to implement the TNC Minimum Compensation for Drivers Ordinance, also two positions for that, different amounts of outreach. What OLS said when they provided this estimate to Central Staff is that they believe that this law has a wider scope than any law that's been passed since the minimum wage for all employees in Seattle and the Wage Theft Ordinance. And so it is their thought that this would have a wider scope for outreach. And so as far as what you're saying, Councilmember Herbald, about a much more limited scope of enforcement, that would certainly benefit from hearing from Office of Labor Standards on, on that approach and how that might impact this estimate.
Yeah, I mean, the, I, I, I hear what you're saying, Karina. Perhaps broader scope for outreach to notify covered employers and workers of the obligations, but more narrow scope for enforcement. And I just want to, I want to see that the numbers, the estimates that OLS is providing aligns with that. And, and I also want to just lift up that the reason why this potentially has a, a broad scope for purposes of notifying workers and the, the folks who are contracting with workers for, 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 for these tasks, the reason why it's a broader scope is because this is an area that is growing, right? There are more workers who are, are working as contract workers. And so I, I think that really, I, I agree the need for funding for outreach to make sure that both workers and the contract employers are, are adhering to the requirements of the ordinance. I just want to also make sure that OLS understands it's a narrower expectation on the, on the enforcement side. Because again, this is intended to be, these are intended to be rights that are, that empower workers to assert their rights.
So operationally, Councilmember, how do we, how do you want to address making sure that those either misunderstandings or potential points of confusion are addressed with OLS?
I think it's just more conversation that, that we need to continue to have.
Okay. Okay, great. Thank you for keeping us updated. Appreciate it.
And this next page on options, not meant to be discussed, but just something for council to consider. Options for responding to OLS's estimates could include adding money to their budget during a supplemental budget process, the, the next year's budget process. Of course, that would entail finding the money to do that and perhaps reducing money in other areas as well. So there certainly would be an impact of that happening. OLS has proposed that perhaps delaying the effective date could allow them more time to prepare for implementation and balance the needs of their existing workload. Combination of those approaches or taking no action and OLS would prioritize their workload using existing resources as they have done for other labor standards that have. My presentation. Are there any more questions on this?
I'm not seeing any questions. Councilmember Herbald, any additional questions? Okay, and Councilmember Herbald, do you want to walk us through a little bit more of the timeline that you're thinking of as well?
Yes, so in continued discussions with both LSAC and Office of Labor Standards, as well as Working Washington on a number of items within, within the bill itself, both as relates to the fiscal impact of the bill and some of the items that Karina queued up today, trying to clear up some, I think, misunderstandings about the expanded scope of the bill beyond what was recommended by LSAC. And as it relates to the pay-up campaign requests for the council's commitment around a minimum compensation standard, still talking with them through the, about the, the timeline expectations in, in that legislation. And I think we're hopefully going to be back in early June.
Okay, great. Well, we will stay tuned. Appreciate it. Karina, anything else from your perspective?
That is all. Thank you for allowing me to be here today.
Well, I appreciate your time and thank you for your patience on the line. I know the Domestic Workers Bill of Rights is probably very interesting as well, since it has your fingerprints on it. Appreciate you being with us this morning slash afternoon. It's 12:35, which means we're slightly ahead of time. I thought we were going to go till 1 and be pushing it, but I want to thank all of our colleagues. You all have been true champions today. Thanks for staying on the line here with us. As a reminder, we do have a meeting on Friday, not Tuesday, Friday, April, excuse me, April, losing track of time here. June 4th, Friday, June 4th. And we will have the ARPA Direct Aid Bill, the Transparency Requires Requirements for Contract Workers, pending confirmation by Councilmember Herbald. We're going to also have the Housing Levy Administration and Finance Plan and Policies in front of us and follow up on additional budget-related items. So thanks so much to everyone for your time today. If there's nothing else for the good of the order, have a wonderful afternoon. And we hope everybody gets a little bit of sunshine before that rain comes. Great to see you all. Thank you so much.